As I said. Good evening, I'd like to call to gather the, call to order the special meeting of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education for Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. So standing as you are able, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance and I'm gonna ask, who can I ask to start? How about Stella? Two words Stella, that's all you have to say. You ready? You're gonna start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in its entirety.
You did a great job Stella and I gave you zero warning, thank you so much. Public comment, we have no public comment, is that correct? We do have a public comment? I'm seeing a lot of pointing, there is no public comment, thank you. So we will get on. First of all, there's one line that was left off and that was the approval of the agenda and I need to make a few edits, modifications with the approval of the board, please. Action item A, the human resources part, I would like us to remove that, please. In addition, we have one candidate, one applicant has removed her name from consideration, that would be Kristi Ellie, so if you could please remove that name from your list. And also, we have some spelling issues. Marco Celsius Magbatang and I'll give that for you, Dr. Kowalski. Marco without an S, Celsius is spelt C.E.L.S.I.U.S. and the rest of the name is Magbatang. And that would be it. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moves, Devon.
Is that working?
It's not working.
Jennifer Stebbin. Support from anyone?
Support.
Thank you, all in a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so we have six, we have an agenda, this is a very good thing, that means we have a meeting. Tonight, we'll be meeting with our candidates, they're all assembled, you may not be able to see that right now, they're assembled in the room with us with their various entourages. And I just want to quickly state that of the six board members up here, four of them have been in exactly the same position you have been in, putting yourself, throwing yourself into the public eye and stepping up to serve the community. And I have to tell you, no matter how this all turns out, we are grateful, grateful, grateful for the time that you have spent, your willingness to step forward. So what I'm gonna do now is ask, I don't know the order, I guess we should do it alphabetically, I could ask everybody to leave. And we'll go down, we'll run it down this order. Ryan Davidson, Nate Hanson, Julie's not here this evening, Celsius Magbatang, Luke Schmumberg and Kelly Van Single. So I'll ask Ryan Davidson to stay behind and the rest of you will be escorted out by Superintendent Kowalski and Communications Director Jackie Martin to your fabulous green rooms that we have scattered throughout the building. And as you've figured out already, Ryan Davidson, you're first in line, so if you want to come up and... Would you like her to sit right up front with you? I'm not sure if that would be...
She can do laps, I don't care, we're happy, we're here just to hear you.
We've each designed one question and we'll give you some time at the end of the fifteen minutes or so to wrap it up with a thought or a statement or if that works for you. And I'm afraid I didn't warn anybody about that, but I'm giving you a little bit of time. So we'll just go down the list of the questions that, as they're written here on the papers that I handed you all, starting with Stebbin, Austin, unless it's gonna mess Ben up, is that gonna mess you up Ben? The questions are gonna be different board members. Groovy, alright. I will pass this over to Vice President Stebbin to ask her first question. Thank you.
Alright. Hi Ryan, thanks for coming and I think you have some family members, so appreciate that as well. My question is, how are you connected to Celine Area Schools and how could you describe your involvement with the district through committees, other volunteer activities, et cetera?
Yes, Vice President Stebbin. Good evening, everyone. Trustees, President, Vice President, Superintendent, who left, and everybody watching on YouTube right now. My name's Ryan Davidson. I've been a Celine resident for coming up on four years now. I came here from Washington, DC, my wife and our four little ones back there, who some aren't so little anymore. We moved here October twenty twenty-one. We had a little bit of a rough start there as I've been here in front of the board three years ago or so and I relegated that story to you then about how our house wasn't done before the school year and I had to drive the kiddos from Port Huron to here every day for school and back. But that's, I mean, that's why we moved here, because of the school district. We knew before we even left Michigan we were coming back to Celine, so it was not a, it wasn't even an option in our mind. We were still top, I think we were four, Celine was four at the time in the state, I think, and number one for academic athletes or student athletes. My connection to the school district, I coach quite a few sports. I'm very involved in the community, in the school district, I take the kids to every event that I can go to. I am on the high school PTO now, I got on that over the summer because I needed someone. And I even, coming here, I was only here for three months and I saw that there was a need for a trustee and I put my, threw my name in the hat then. I knew I hadn't, I really didn't know anything about Celine barely at the time, but I knew that I, you know, I'm active and I like to help out with people as much as I can. I see a need and I like to, I feel that need because that's the reason I do everything that I do.
Thank you very much, I'll hand this over to Treasurer Austin.
Hello, thanks for coming. What is your motivation for applying for this position and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
Yes, sir. So I have quite a few unique qualities, but my motivation for coming to the board is, like I had said previously, three years ago, I was looking into this, didn't really line up to actually run the electoral way that, later that year, just because of my work and everything that was going on. So I figured, you know, I would put a pin in that for a little while and then readdress it further down the line. I, I really feel like there's a lot of good in Celine and there's a lot of good that can still be done in Celine. There's a lot that I hear, you know, I'd say that I have my ear to the grindstone, but like I, I'm out and about in the community a lot and a lot of organizations. Some people have some, some heartburn about certain issues, so I feel like I can help with that. I'm a federal agent, I've been a federal agent for seventeen years, so I'm very good at investigating, I'm very good at looking at large sheets of data and drilling that down to what's needed or what's not needed, where the issues might lie. I, I love, obviously I love public safety and I was a Secret Service agent for eleven years, so I'm big on safety and security, that's my big thing. I worked for the Postal Inspection Service for a couple of years and now I'm in Office of the Inspector General, the Defense Logistics Agency over in Battle Creek, so it's a, it's a vision of the Department of Defense, but we deal mostly with workplace violence, with fraud, waste and abuse for the federal government side of the house. So I think all those skills combined make me a very unique individual when it comes to this. And I also am, starting in the fall, PhD at Eastern in cybersecurity, so I'm gonna knock out that education side of the house as well, because I'd like to teach in retirement.
Thank you very much, I'll pass this over to Trustee Gold.
I just wanna phrase. What would you want an alumni of Celine Area Schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
Oh, that's a, that question was asked three years ago, so I can't use my same answer that I used for that. But I really did like my answer, because some teachers make an impact forever, for life. So that's, that's one thing I said back then, as a few of you would remember, maybe. But it's just, it's amazing when you have those memories to look back on. I try to tell the kids all the time, you don't get another shot at this, like this is not a dress rehearsal, this is the, it's not the best years of your life, but it's, these are years of your life that you're never gonna do these again, hopefully. You're not gonna repeat a grade or anything like that. So you need to make the most of it, play sports, you know, make friends, have those teachers that give you that aha moment, because that's, that's my favorite thing. I said three years ago, there was my teacher, Mr. Lasecki down in Sandusky, Michigan, which is a little teeny tiny town. I still call him Mr. Lasecki even though, you know, we're like only ten years apart now, so it's, it's just that level of respect that I have for somebody that so influenced my life for the three years, that he was my math teacher for all three years. He was also one of my references to go to the Secret Service as well, so. He knew me better than most people. So I, as an alumnus of anywhere, it doesn't matter where you're from, I want people to look back fondly and they all wanna feel like, you know what, I had an impact there, that place impacted me. Sometimes it's not about the product, it's what leads to the product that makes the, the whole product better. It's the steps you take. So it could be like, you know, hey, yeah, I graduated as a C student, but now I'm going to Harvard, so I mean, there's, there's always a win there. So I was a C student and I'm gonna go get a doctorate.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass it over to Secretary Burwick.
Hi, thank you. The board strives to center students' needs and outcomes when making decisions on behalf of the school district. The primary way in which we do that is through policy. Please discuss any experiences you have with policymaking and/or your approach to building consensus when creating policy.
Yes, I understand that there is quite a few stakeholders involved in the whole policy formation. You have obviously the number one priority is the students, I mean, that's why we're all here, is for the students. You have the parents, you have the administration and then you have the school board and the community. So it all has to be a consensus as much as possible. I have quite a bit of experience in policy when it comes to, I wrote policy and created policy when I was in the Secret Service for different things that I did along the way. As the board would probably know, I submitted a policy revision for the hiring policy here in Celine for the school district because of things. And I've actually reached out to state legislators as well to, you know, address the hiring for school districts, especially when it comes to safety and security issues of our students. So it's not something that I fear at all, like I love, I love learning new things and I love doing new things. Like I didn't know how to write policy, like on a school level, hey, it's the military, right, a policy, yeah, that's easy, because it's the military, like A, B, C, D. You know, hey, it's Secret Service, it's federal government, you know, this is how we do policy, okay, cool. This was totally new for me, but I mean, you just learn it and you do it and see what happens. So I mean, I have some movement with the state legislator trying to get some stuff in front of the state, change some of the hiring practices, because some states have different rules when it comes to school hiring and I, and I like them, as a member of, I'm a member of the American Threat Association Professionals, so I reach out to those coworkers a lot, those, my peers and say, hey, what do your states do for, you know, for this, what does your school district do for this? So it's very important to me, but like I said, it has to be a balance, you know, you listen to everybody, you compare everybody's notes, but like ultimately it's the students that have to be the person that, the people, the group that is the most important in all the policies. I mean, I can't say, you know, hey, I want this to happen, but it has to happen as I said, so it's, it's not the way it works.
Could I ask clarification? Did you, you said the American something officials?
Yes, American Threat Association Professionals.
Threat Association Professionals, thank you. If you're done, I'll pass this over to Jason Tizidis.
Hey, thanks for joining us tonight. Sitting on the board means that you may have to vote on controversial issues. Describe how you work through information regarding a particular topic and what your process is for making difficult or controversial decisions.
Well, as, as members of the community and members of the board know, I don't particularly shy away from controversial topics. I just, I am, I'm fact-based. I do understand that when I came here a few months back to speak on an issue that it was seen by some as more of a personal attack, then I was just trying to relay facts and I appreciate Dr. McVeigh understanding when I was trying to prove how it wasn't a personal attack and I, if I had more time, I probably would have tried to frame it a lot better than what I did. But that's, that's me in a nutshell, like I don't run off until I have all the information at hand. And then I'll even, I have soundboards back there. I talk to my kids, I try to talk to them kids, but you know, I have a teenager back there, so that doesn't go very well. Oh, school, fine. But they have, they know, they're in the school, like, hey, what's going on in school, what are you hearing about? Like I see these weird trends, oh, you know, there's a laptop trend, I'm gonna blow this laptop up. So I mean, I, I talk to them about these things, because they know more than I do. And I found if you just ask a little bit every day, every day you get a little bit more, like with the transactional communication. So I mean, I, I try to weigh everything I possibly can. I don't, I wouldn't say I wear my heart on the sleeve all the time, but I definitely, I feel, if I feel something is wrong, I'm gonna address it, even, even if I have personal stake in it. Like I'm the first one to admit when I'm wrong, like I have no issue with that whatsoever, so I expect it from everyone to have the personal accountability.
Thank you. Yeah, you can speak, but that doesn't mean they'll listen, that's for sure. I have the last question and it's, so the superintendent-board relationship is an extremely important one. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with our superintendent?
I think I have a unique situation with our incoming superintendent, because we're gonna be neighbors, I'm pretty sure. But beyond that, it's, open lines of communication, like you don't have to let things, I feel like we get blips on the radars a lot, like, hey, we hear about this or we hear about that, there's a little issue going here, it's not, not a big deal, not a big deal. But at that point is, like, the lines of communication need to start, like, hey, did you hear about this, did you hear about that? Because eventually that's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. And if you don't have those open lines with your superintendent, if you only meet, I, I know it doesn't happen here, because like, you know, obviously I've, I've been around the town enough to see and the district to see that the superintendent and the board have a very good working relationship. But that's, that's key to the whole thing. There has to be mutual respect, there has to be a two-way street, bounce things off each other, just to see how it goes. I mean, I know there's conferences and meetings that everybody goes to to learn the new topics, the new AI type stuff, like Dr. McVeigh just experienced a couple of months back. But I mean, it's, it's all about that, like you're gonna learn from each other. Like everybody has a unique experience, everybody has a unique way of looking at things, so if you bring that all together, it usually works out okay. But obviously, the superintendent is the administrative head and the school board is an advising board, if you will. So I just think it has to be a complete two-way street with a hundred percent transparency.
Well, thank you very much, Ryan. If you don't mind, you've got a whole two minutes left, if you want to make a sort of closing statement or comment, that would be fantastic, you'd have the time for that.
Yes, sir. So like I said, Ryan Davidson, lived here almost four years now, we love it here, it's, it's why we moved here. I just really wanna help out as much as I can and even if, no matter what happens today, what happens tomorrow, like I'm, I'm not going anywhere. I'm always here, I've always offered my services, if, if it needs to be a board, a committee, anything along those lines, I'm always here for that. I, obviously, even friendships and personal relationships I have with people don't stop me from speaking out on things. So it's not, you're gonna get a hundred percent truth and honesty with me, for better or worse, and I think my daughter's probably running around behind me right now, I can hear the flip flops. But, yeah, I like them too, obviously. So it's, it's just very important to me that things keep going in a forward direction. We, we've, as Vice President Stebbin could attest to as well, we've had five or six people move out of, families move out of our neighborhood, our neighborhood alone this year. So I mean, that's not great, that people are leaving one specific subdivision at that rate. So it's not, I don't know if it's transparency, it's a trust issue, you know, what's going on with individuals or maybe it's just, just life happens and that's the way it is, but if you drive around town, there's a lot of houses for sale. And I don't like the fact that people are leaving Celine when we need people to come to Celine. So, any more questions for me? Ladies and gentlemen?
But if that's it for your wrapping up statement and your conclusory statement, thank you very much, Mr. Davidson, for being here tonight and for sharing your insights and we'll certainly get back with you soon as we've deliberated, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing we, while you're settling in, one thing we neglected to do the last time was have you just say hello and let us know who you are at the very start, before we dive deep right into our questions, so.
Green light.
Green light is on, that means you can start. If you could just let us know who you are in a word or two and then we'll dive into our questions, sir.
Okay, very good. Just briefly, my name is Nathan Hanson, I've met several of you. I relocated to Celine about eighteen months ago. Been a commercial pilot for Delta Airlines and Endeavor Airlines for the past twenty-three years. Grew up in Iowa, moved out to Colorado for a while and found my way back to the Midwest, lived in Minnesota for several years and through several circumstances, we had a great opportunity to move to Celine, kind of on a whim. Took a big leap of faith and here we are eighteen months later. So the other thing is, you've all got an envelope there. I'd like you to take the envelope out, look at what's in there and then just set it aside. And at some point, I'll address something that's very important to me on that picture. So with that, I'm ready to get started.
Great, well, we'll start with Vice President Stebbin with the first question. Thanks, Nathan or Nate, what would you prefer?
It's Nate, unless you really need my attention, then it's Nathan. So let's go with Nate.
I'm gonna go with Nate. Nate, welcome, and it was very nice to meet your family earlier. My question is, how are you connected to Celine Area Schools and could you describe your involvement with the district through committees, other volunteer activities, et cetera?
Very good, thank you very much. My involvement with Celine is a quick and faithful path. So essentially, eighteen months ago, I was traveling with a colleague of mine and we were flying overhead Celine and he looked down at the town we were flying over and he said, there's my house and that's Celine. Pretended I was interested in some capacity, looked down, said, wow, that's pretty cool. And then he proceeded to talk about the school district and the athletic program and that was kind of the end of the conversation. Essentially, what has happened since then is we have made a huge commitment and a big move to Celine and part of what drove me to make this switch to Celine and kind of get on track to the question was, what drove me to be sitting here this evening was, it was really three events that happened since we moved here. And when the vacancy came open, I really kind of wasn't that interested, but I felt compelled to do it based on kind of three things that we've experienced since we've been here. And so I put in my notice of interest, filled out the application, talked to a lot of people about it, talked to some fellow board members and felt really good about the decision. But I wasn't quite to the point where I was all in. And so this past weekend, I spent some time talking with some other board members, I looked up a bunch of past meetings and trustee Tizidis kind of shook me up a little bit with one of the answers to your question is, when you were first applying, you had mentioned that it's a very thankless job and that your friends told you, why would you do this? And that was enough to motivate you to do it. Well, that wasn't quite enough to make me go all in, it was enough to make me pause. And so I had a little bit of concern and thinking, do I really want to put this on my plate right now? And so I woke up Sunday morning and I just really felt most of my big decisions get shaped in some natural form and I just felt like there was something missing, but I knew I was gonna apply. And so we go to church and I'm sitting there and the sermon is pitcher of a servant. And I'm just sitting there looking around like I'm on candid camera or in some capacity. And not only that, but the preacher was very engaging and he ended with the first four words of a book and he said, it's not about you. And at that point, I walked out of the service, I'm all in, big weight off my shoulders and I just felt I'm really excited to move forward with this. So that leads me to three unique experiences that really drove me to apply for the position. And one had to do with students, one had to do with staff and one had to do with the administration. Last fall, you're all aware of the issue with the football team and that was my first exposure to the school board, coming in here and watching these kids. And I remember sitting, just back here, just about where my kids are and, you know, these kids, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, get up in front of the board and they fight for what they believe in, they fight for each other, they fight for their coaches. And for them to get up in front of the school board and to take that type of risk to do that, really moved me and I just felt so proud of these kids for what they were doing. And I know the end result of that whole issue, twenty-five years, that's not gonna have that big of an impact, because they know they won those three games. What's gonna have a big impact is the maturity and the leadership that they learned by going through that experience. So that's what affected me with the students. What affected me with the staff is when we made a visit here, we were so moved by the welcoming that we got, the touring of the schools, the high school, middle school. And my son was so engaged that he wanted to move mid-year of his freshman year of high school to Celine. So he moved March first and my wife and I, we just simply could not move here till April first. And he insisted, I wanna get here for track. And so we talked his grandparents into coming, babysitting him basically for a month. And new school, on his own, no parents, it was a dream, right? So he had a, he had a rough first month, but the way that went so well was the staff at the high school was so welcoming and so overwhelmingly receptive to what he needed. And I have to call out Coach Corbin Brown, he just kind of went out of his way and I've never seen somebody just exhibit such leadership. The principal, the teachers, and I just felt so compelled to basically pay it forward. That was what really struck me with the staff. As far as the administration goes, I figured, okay, I've got six, seven years in the district with our children still. with our children still. And so I got involved with the superintendent search. And what I found is, I was really engaged, I was really interested, and I found myself kind of going back and forth with some of the candidates. And what I was so moved by was your comments that you made after everybody interviewed, that they were so spot on, and they were so accurate, and they were so well thought out, so that when you got to the final two, and then I made the decision, I'm gonna come and do the meet and greet, and I was kind of in the camp of someone else, and Rachel just absolutely blew me away with her, how candid she was, how genuine she was, and I was so excited about her communication style, that I was sitting in the back, and I was thinking, "Man, that's an A player right there, like, I could work with her." And made a lot of comments, really felt my voice was heard, and I was so impressed with the transparency of the whole process, that I wanna pay it forward, not only for Dr. Kowalski, but for the board, because I was so impressed with the way everybody handled themselves. There was some difference in, of opinions, everybody was so respectful. And so that's why I'm here. Some issues are some qualities that I think I bring to the table, is I'm new to the area, I'm a fresh face, I have no bias, I don't have something from two to five years ago. So for example, we were in, I'll give you an aviation story, is we were in JFK probably fifteen years ago, and there was a snowstorm, it was one of those days that everybody's late, and there was a lady, had spent an entire day in JFK, and she was in tears, and I get to the airplane, and this is when I was a captain at a regional airline, so I was the one in charge, and she was just in absolute tears, and I came out, got explained to what the story was. Well, the ground agents, she had this gigantic dog crate, but the dog was only six months old, so it was a fairly small dog. And everybody was like, "We can't get the dog crate on the plane," because I flew a regional jet at the time, and it just didn't fit. And so the only solution was that they were gonna get her on a bigger plane where the dog crate would fit, send her to Miami, or no, to Atlanta, spend the night in Atlanta, and then go back to Toronto. And I'm looking at everybody like, I asked the lady, I said, I introduced myself, and I said, "How important is the dog crate to you?" And she goes, "I could care less about the dog crate." And I said, "Throw the dog crate in the trash bin and put the dog on the plane, and let's go." And off we went. She didn't even care about the dog crate. Now I made arrangements for it to go to Atlanta and Toronto, so I know it got there at some point. But that's a pretty simplified example, but that's kind of what I bring, is I don't have some of this baggage from issues that have happened three to five years ago. I will say you, tell you, in the time that I have been here, I have witnessed some things that are very concerning, and so I'm aware of some of the issues that the district is gonna be facing. I'm a really good problem solver, I work in a very complex, dynamic environment that requires some solutions to problems in a really quick way, others, I have more time. So I'm really good at seeing solutions to issues. And thirdly, I feel I have a really good knack of getting along with people, building rapport. And if I look back in the history of my life, when I was in finance at Merrill Lynch, when I was at Endeavour Airlines, I've always ended up in some type of teaching or educational position. I was, I became, after three years at Merrill Lynch, I became the, I was in charge of new hires. When I was Endeavour Airlines, I became an instructor, and at some point, I became a check airman, which I'm the one that evaluated pilots. And so I feel I have a very natural connection to people, I know how to build relationships.
Treasure Austin, I have a feeling that-
We're gonna speed through this real quick.
That that question was answered.
It probably was. Yeah. My question to you was gonna be, what is your motivation for applying for this position, and what unique qualities will you bring to the board? I think you've already answered those, who can go on to number three.
I appreciate your flexibility. Dr. Gold.
How would you like an alumni of Celine area schools to remember and reflect on their time and experience and education in the district?
Thank you, Dr. Gold. What I'm gonna want students to go out into the world and be good collaborators, good critical thinkers, creative, and be very good at communication. All four of those are on our little compass. Now, that's pretty lofty goals. So I was thinking about that, because I looked back in some of the past questions, and I thought, "How would I feel about my high school? And what are, trying to be thoughtful about some issues that I went through?" And so I thought about, and something that comes up at my five-year, ten-year, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty-year reunions, and this story always gets told. When I was in high school as a senior, in third period, we had accounting, and I was really good in accounting, I was good in math, but two of my best friends were really not very good in accounting. The next class was study hall. So it was just an open class, you could kind of do anything you wanted. But we had a really strict teacher, she wouldn't let us talk, she wouldn't really let us do a whole lot. So what I applied some critical thinking, in my opinion, is we came up with a plan to get out of that study hall. So I went to our accounting teacher and said, "Look, all three of us are in this study hall, can we come to your class and work on accounting?" And he said, "That's a great idea, however, I'm not gonna be there." "No problem, I'll take care of it, I'll make sure these guys get their homework done." So needless to say, we hand in our three passes at our study hall, and we go to this guy's class, and we became really, really good cribbage players for the next four months. So we learned about communication, critical thinking, we worked together, and we were pretty creative with our solution. So really, what I would like alum to look back on is, I want them to come to their five, ten, twenty-five year reunions, for one, because if they attend that, they probably had a good experience. And they're not gonna tell stories about any type of class, they're gonna tell really fun stories that, "Oh man, remember when this, remember when that, remember when that." So I have those remember stories, because I had a really good high school experience, and that's what I would like them to be able to come back to their reunions, and that's gonna be a good barometer of how the school district is doing, in my opinion.
Thank you. Treasure Berwick.
The board strives to center students' needs and outcomes when making decisions on behalf of the school district. The primary way in which we do that is through policy. Please discuss any experiences you have with policymaking and/or your approach to building consensus when creating policy.
With policy, I've been in two very regulated industries, in finance and aviation. Everybody's got their policy manuals, what we call in aviation is our FOM, it's our Flight Operations Manual, and they're very strict guidelines of policies that we have to find and we have to follow. And some are pretty loose, and sometimes people cut corners here and there, but what the risk is, if you start cutting corners and you don't truly follow policy, and I know Trustee Berwick, I really respect the fact that you are the policy enforcer in some capacity, because it gives you a lot of credibility, and I love the comment you made, that that gives you credibility in the community, is if you follow the rules, you can't just pick and choose when you decide to follow the policy. So we had a phrase called normalized deviance in aviation, and it's basically, it's a way to get yourself in a crash, because what happens is, every time you do something that you know is wrong and you get away with it, it normalizes that behavior. So you have to take a strict approach to stick with policy. So I've spent twenty-two years dealing with policy in both of my professions. As far as building a consensus, my approach to that has always been, I've got to establish some rapport with all of you in some capacity, I have to find some common goal, because there's gonna be disagreements. So at first, we spend a lot of time building the relationships between us, then we can start tackling the issues, and what I'm really finding is that as long as you can express your opinion and not tie something else to it, some type of behavior, to say, "Well, if you don't agree with my position, then you're this, that, or the other." Just simply state your position and then listen to the other position, and then you can move forward. And that's how I've built consensus.
Jason Tzidides.
Sitting on the board means that you have to vote on controversial issues. Describe how you work through information regarding particular topics and what your process is for making a difficult or controversial decision.
That's gonna be an area that I feel will be a strength, is there are lots of, can be controversial decisions in the flight deck, not only just with the pilots, but with the flight attendants, and not only that, with the passengers as well. The whole key is, at least in the school district, I think you have to start with, is you just start with safety. You have to make sure the students are safe, you have to make sure the staff is safe. Check that box first. Then you can start hearing arguments. I know you're very data-driven, I am as well, being in the industry that I am, is that numbers don't lie, and I think you, it's really important to collect data and figure out where is the problem, really truly identify the problem. Then, once you've made a decision of the direction you're gonna go, you have to stick with it. You can't just soft throw it out there, you have to say, "This is the decision that we're making, and this is why." And you have to be willing to take a punch, because you're going to get some blowback on some decisions that are not popular. And if you can just sit there and take that punch, I really feel in two or three weeks down the road, that conversation is going to change to, I got a lot of respect for that guy, that he made that decision, and he stood up in front of people and took a punch. And that's what I'm willing to do, I've done that. In my career as an evaluator, I've had people come in for their annual training, completely unprepared, thinking they were just gonna get a free pass from me because of our relationship, and I've had very difficult decisions to let them know that they failed their event, not me. So that's how I would build difficult decisions.
Thank you. Last question, and then a wrap-up from you. So the relationship between the superintendent and the board is an extremely important one. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with the superintendent?
I feel I've already started that process with Dr. Kowalski. When she got the position, I sent her a nice email, welcomed her to the area. In addition, I sent Nick an email, thanking him for the time that he spent, because it's a big commitment to do that, so I thought that was important. And I took, with no agenda with Dr. Kowalski, she made herself very transparent, I've exchanged a few text messages with her, I've shared with her that our dog, Slade, is now an alliance of, does pet therapy in the town, and so we've got this connective tissue now, and I know you've got a couple pups, I'm not, based on, let's see, I think it's really important to keep, to not share too much information, so I'm not gonna say their names, but I know there's the dog people on the board. So once you build that connective tissue, then you can start with the real issues. And I feel like one of my motivations for doing this is, I really like Dr. Kowalski. I think she's just gonna hit it out of the park, and I think with the right support from the board, she's gonna do great things.
Well, thank you very much. If you have anything you wanna say to wrap up your time with us, I don't think I've missed anybody, no? If you have anything that you wanna say to wrap up your time with us, feel free, the floor is yours.
I do, the last thing, I gave you all a picture, and that picture is from thirty-two years ago. And just a really quick story, I was in Aviation Officer Candidate School in Pensacola, Florida, and it's basically boot camp for pilots being in the Navy. And so we're in our fourth out of five months, and every month, you get a, what's called a room locker and personnel inspection. So the drill instructor comes in and looks at your room, your locker, your uniform, your knowledge that you're supposed to have at that time. Our class started with thirty-four people, we ended up with seventeen, and at that point, there was only seventeen, so we were really tight. And so I'm in a room with three other candidates, the drill instructor's next door, we've got literally two minutes before he comes into our room, and I look straight across from my colleague, and he sticks his hands in his pockets, and he pulls out a handful of leaves and dirt. And at this point, you're toast, you're not getting through this inspection. Now, he had struggled with training in some capacity, and I had fortunately not had too many hiccups. Without even thinking about it, I take off my coat, walk across the room, take your coat off, I put his coat on, he took my coat, drill instructor comes in, pass, 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 gets to me, I think I might pull this off, deliberately goes into my pockets, the very last thing, pulls out the dirt, throws it across the room, walks out the door, Hanson, fail. He leaves the room, we all high five because we survived, and two months later, we all graduated. So that's my graduation picture. And what I found out later that night, it just kind of registered with me, is that if you graduated first in your class, you got to fly any airplane in the Navy fleet. And if you've seen Top Gun, it was the F-14 Tomcat, that's what I was gonna fly. Because of that failure, I graduated second, and it was devastating, because, and it's haunted me for thirty-two years, for the most part, but it's also been a blessing to me as well. And so if you look at that picture, after we graduated, we went down on the beach, and if you look at that post, there's a blue flag on that post, and while I didn't finish first, and I didn't get to fly a fourteen Tomcats, the drill instructor said to me, "Staff Sergeant Wilson, can you come to my office?" So I go down to his office, and he slides this across the table to me. This is the flag that we carried around our entire Officer Candidate School, and this is probably one of my prized possessions, and as you can see, it's all folded up, because I keep it in the bottom of a tote that I share with very few people, but the reason I think it was appropriate was that message that I heard on Sunday, is that, "Picture of a servant," and this reminds me of, this was probably one of the emotional highs of my life, and it was probably one of the emotional lows, because this guy, the fact that I earned his respect, that he gave me this flag, and it's a reminder to me how important it is to pay it forward. And with that, I'm really impressed with the candidates you have, you're gonna make a great decision, whether I'm in that seat, out in the crowd, ten thousand feet directly above you, I'm gonna support the district, I'm super excited about the future, I'm thrilled, I've been so, we're so happy here that, thanks for your time.
Well, thank you very much, sir, I appreciate it, and thank you, thank you. It's very nice to meet the whole family as well, thank you. Dr. Kowalski will meet you at the door and escort you out. Oh, thank you. Thanks, I just, everyone's drinking water, and I thought, what am I missing? Oh, fluids, thank you. I'd like to, I'd, so you're our next applicant, I'd like you, if you don't mind, to start off by just introducing yourself, and then we, briefly, and then we each have a question for you during the next fifteen minutes or so. And if you want to wrap up with a statement, that you're welcome to do that as well. I'm sorry, I didn't warn you about that in advance, but sure you can roll with it. No, it's not.
Hello, hello.
Now it's on.
As you heard, my name is Marco Celsius-Maggotang, I prefer Celsius, and I'm a he/him. I recently moved from Pennsylvania, Allentown, Pennsylvania, back in January. Some might see that as a disadvantage, that I don't know much about the Celine area schools. I did, I do know a little bit, because I am a resident here now, and I have a lot of neighbors in my new community that send their kids to Woodland Meadows and are quite happy. And I've, as I said, I have a four-year-old son and my, my wife, we're extremely happy with our neighborhood and the community that we chose, and that's the primary reason I'm here. I'd like to be on the board, because as a former middle school teacher, math and science, fourth grade teacher, primarily English language learners, in Lansing, Michigan, in Allentown, I was a science consultant for NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards, as a trainer throughout eastern Pennsylvania, suburbs of Philly and Allentown. I feel I have a very unique perspective when it comes to how, what, how and how I can contribute to the school board. Having fresh eyes and being part of multiple districts gives me that opportunity to ask questions and making sure our processes are followed and, and are accountable to- and making sure our processes are followed and are accountable to all of those processes. As a Filipino-American, I am also here for people of color because I want to make sure that there's representation within not just the educators, but the leaders in the educational system. As a young man, a young child growing up in Canton, I did not see many people who looked like me in schools until I got to tenth grade in Canton and then again at Eastern Michigan. So, I would like that to be different for my son and for all of his friends and all of the students here at Saline Area Schools. I'm currently a stay-at-home dad for the last handful of years. I did the consulting as a part-time thing. My wife, my wife is an incredible attorney. She started her own practice from home. So, in Allentown, we made the decision to move closer to my parents here in Canton. And her friends, her best friend also moved here, so we have our built-in community. So, I have the time, when it comes to evenings, to be very hands-on in this educational setting. I was telling my wife, I wasn't really too nervous until this morning. But as I walked into the building, this is familiar to me. I've been in schools for over a decade. I've consulted with many superintendents and school districts on implementation of NGSS. It brings me joy and passion to do this work. And this is the next level. Although it's volunteer, it's the next level, I believe, in creating an impact in the community that I now live in. Although I don't know much about it yet, I would love to be a part of that.
Well, thank you very much. I'm going to pass the first question over to Vice President Stebbin.
All right. Hi Celsius, thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. It was nice meeting you earlier. My question is, how are you connected to Saline Area Schools? And could you describe your involvement with the district through committees or their volunteer activities, et cetera?
Yeah, this was very brief to answer in the initial questionnaire. I don't have any connection at this moment. Being a new resident, having a young child who's not in preschool or kindergarten, I don't have any volunteer opportunities per se. As a stay-at-home dad, I'm with him. In the community, we're at playgrounds, we go to the farmer's market, we go to the library all the time. So, I'm around, but not actively involved in the school system yet.
Thank you.
Treasurer Austin.
Hi. What is your motivation for applying for this position and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
My main interest is that as my son continues his education, I would, as a public school teacher, I would love for him to be a public school student. I do have, so one of my primary reasons is, I do have a concern knowing that there was a teacher negotiation that happened recently and is still potentially, I don't know the results of it. Having been in two very sour, strenuous, stressful teacher negotiations in my past two districts, I saw the effects, the unintended consequences of educators feeling devalued, not being compensated, leaving the district, on less qualified teachers filling their roles, student classroom sizes increasing, student achievement decreasing. I don't, I've seen it. I've been through it. I don't think it's going to happen here. And I think I have a perspective that can help make sure it doesn't, in ways of retaining the highly qualified teachers that you already have, and then attracting any of the best educators in the county or even around the state. So, that's a side tangent of why I want to be part of the board because I know the board helps with the negotiation part. And the teacher, helping the teachers feel valued, compensated, and possibly even ascending into further administrative roles. What was the second part of that question? Yeah, I think, yeah, I was also a dean of instruction, so I know the administrative side of school leadership. So, knowing all the compliance issues and all of the legalities. My wife being an attorney, we talk about things to make sure that everything's on the up and up and not going to be a case later. So, I believe I have that part that can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gold, please.
Hi. What would you like an alumni of Saline Area Schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
That's a great question. I believe most students want to feel like they were welcomed within their class every day, along with being academically pushed and supported in order to achieve their potential. I know that it's hard, as a former teacher, I know that's hard to accomplish, having limited resources in many, many ways. But the student should never, I believe the student should never feel that they're a burden to the teacher, to the school, to the community.
Thank you. I'll pass this over to Secretary Berwick.
Hi, thank you. The board strives to center students' needs and outcomes when making decisions on behalf of the school district. The primary way in which we do that is through policy. Please discuss any experiences you have with policymaking and/or your approach to building consensus when creating policy.
I've been part of two different school communities where I was in school leadership positions. One is administrator and the second as a science team lead. I'll speak on both parts. As an administrator for a charter school, our policies were able to be changed quite quickly. We had a short process in which to discuss with the community and stakeholders and present it to our leadership team and then our board. And within less than a month, we could enact new policies, whether it's safety-related or academics. I, my school was in Lansing, so I had more urban setting issues where I was the administrator of the middle school. A lot different than what I previously did with fourth grade. So, I dealt with weapons, drugs, things of that nature. And then fostering those parent and staff and stakeholder relationships during those times. And recreating policies to ensure it doesn't continue for future students. And then as a teacher leader at Waverly, part of the policy as NGSS was being adopted in the state of Michigan, I was a pilot teacher. I was piloting a program within my classroom before the rest of the science department in the eighth grade curriculum. And worked with the curriculum director, the superintendent, and the science team to try and get the next, pilot the next curriculum so that we have it cohesive through K-12. That took months and months and school board meetings and presentations, which all happened to be very successful. And then I ended up moving for my wife's position and did the same thing in Allentown. Because Allentown, or sorry, Pennsylvania adopted NGSS three years after Michigan did. And so, in that three-year time span, I'm piloting it in my fourth grade classroom, working with the science center, the local science center, to get more professional development. Became a Next Generation Science trainer. And then, then I became a stay-at-home dad during the pandemic. And so, I became the trainer for the eastern part of Pennsylvania. So, policy, I was able to, I've been, I've done that many times, recreated it, rewrote it. Luckily, I have a legal help at home. When we write something, I'm able to run it back through her, obviously also with the school's legal team. Implementation, I am very good at implementing things. I, as a middle school administrator, by-the-book kind of leadership, code of conduct, just follow that. As a classroom teacher, had a lot more kid gloves on, gave a lot, not in a negative connotation at all. Like, more like wanting to support the student and reteach over punishment until it becomes a point where it's a disruption.
Thank you. I'm going to pass this next one over to Jase, trustee Tizit.
Sitting on the board means that you have to vote on controversial decisions and issues. Describe how you work through information regarding a particular topic and what your process is for making those controversial decisions.
Great question. Through my coursework at Eastern Michigan, through undergrad and my master's degree coursework, my frame of reference is through, as an administrator, it was through the legal realm to make sure everything is compliant. As a school board member, I would definitely make sure I'm legally compliant. But then also, the classroom teacher framework comes in where students should feel, students' families should feel they are heard, valued, and then understand if that policy, how that policy may affect them or not affect them. And as I go through the decision-making process of which way to vote, I would definitely pick a side that's more in favor of supporting students and their academic achievement and their, and strengthening their relationship with the school. Because I don't want students to have negative feelings towards education. That's why I became an educator. I don't know if I answered that full question.
I think you did.
Okay. Thank you.
And I get the last question in the remaining few minutes we have. So, the relationship between the board and the superintendent is an extremely important one. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with our superintendent?
From my experience, the board sets the vision and the policies for the school district. And the superintendent plans the way to ensure that all the vision and the policies are met. To hold that person accountable, we would, I believe, I've never been part of a school board, I believe there would be a framework, a rubric as to how to evaluate that each of these, each of these policies are met and to what level. Almost like a grading rubric as a teacher. And then rooms, room for improvement, like checking quarterly, checking monthly, how, towards the progress of each of those policies. And knowing that the superintendent has a very large job, compartmentalizing each of those policies and breaking it down into different segments so that if that superintendent might need more assistance or guidance in, or is, needs, has a lot of room for improvement in a certain area, that we as a school board can find ways to support that superintendent. I believe that's possible. And if it's not, then as in the case in other school districts I've worked with, the school boards have released superintendents from their position for not meeting policies adequately. So, that I don't, based on what I've read about Dr. Kowalski, I don't see that as an issue. But I do know that it's a possibility. So, having a framework, rubric as to making sure she or he in the future is compliant with meeting those goals and policies.
Pardon me, in fact, there are forty-two separate rubrics that we have to look at. So, I think that was the last count I saw.
Did you create those?
Did we what?
The board? Oh, okay.
Oh, no, we embrace those from the Michigan Association of School Boards. Thank you. If you could just sort of wrap us up and thank you very much for meeting with us this evening. But you've got like about a minute left, if you don't mind, just sort of tying a bow in it?
I'm extremely excited to be interviewing for this position. I know that it's a thankless job. And I know you guys, all of you work so hard in, for the community. And I would love to be part of it. My passion for schools and educating students and helping families navigate through the system, I've done that. I would love to continue to do that as a school board member. And thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Well, it was a pleasure to get to know you. You were a name that I was not familiar with. And I'm welcome to Saline. And thank you very much for applying tonight. Appreciate it. So, Dr. Kowalski will escort you out. And appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I don't know.
I think it's forty-two or forty-six. Yeah.
There's a lot.
You seem ready, sir. So, if you would, start us off, pardon me, let me just make sure this is not as hot as it feels. Good evening. Thank you very much. If you could just start us off with a very brief introduction of yourself. And we are each going to fire one question off to you. And at the very end, if you could wrap things up in a statement or so, which of course I had no, did not give you any warning about it, my apologies, that would be great. So, I'll let, you have the floor for at least the next fifteen to twenty minutes.
All right. I'll try to be respectful of everybody's time.
Thank you.
My name's Luke Schmerberg. I am a resident of formerly the city of Saline, which is where I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. McVeigh when we both served on the City Environmental Commission. And a couple of years ago, I moved out to Lodi Township. So, just a hop, skip, and a jump away, but still within the school district. And that was something that was important to me because my wife and I didn't know it at the time. But we then had a daughter. And now she's going to be coming into kindergarten in a couple of years. I've always been interested in staying involved in the community. And as I have been out in the township, I've noticed that the, all the great things that I was able to do within town, not really available. But being within the school district, I think that this is something that is a big part of the identity of this community. It's a big part of my identity as somebody who went to school here. This was my middle school where we're sitting. It was my dad's high school. I found out that there's a vault in there where hopefully he wasn't tossed for being a bad kid when he was in high school. But that's something that has been an important part of my decision to remain here after growing up here, going to college in Ann Arbor and then law school in Madison, the University of Wisconsin, and then coming back. So, that's who I am. I'm kind of a, as you saw from the packet, I have a pretty short resume. It's kind of got one entry on it, which is kind of the blessing and the curse of working with your dad when you get out of school. So, that's the thing that I like to think of myself as, as being from the community, from the area. And even though I don't live in town anymore, looking for a way to contribute to the community. And hopefully, this is a way that I could do that.
Well, I appreciate that. Thanks for the introduction. I'm going to pass the first question over to Vice President Stebbin.
Thank you. It was nice meeting you earlier.
Thank you. It was nice meeting you earlier. Um, my question is, how are you connected to Celine area schools? I think we heard a little bit about this. Um, and could you describe your involvement with the district through committees or other, uh, volunteer activities?
Sure. Thank you. The most recent work that I did, and I'm not just going to try and rely on two thousand and one when I, back when I graduated. I was lucky enough to work with the high school mock trial team a few years ago. Unfortunately, that kind of petered out because our teacher coach, Brian Bose, he had his plate full track coaching kids of his own. But that was the last thing that brought me into the schools. And I know that that was a very self-selected group because it was a group of high school students who went to Mr. Bose and said, "We want to start this club." And I knew Brian through involvement with the track team back in the day and he roped me in for a bit. So I know that the group of students that I was working with were, it's a subset being in high school and it's a subset of a subset being kids who wanted to not only have a club, but wanted to go out and find an adult who could help them with that. But I was still blown away completely by the initiative that they showed, not just in getting the club organized, but in reaching out to people at the Washtenaw County Courthouse to say, "Hey, we want to come in and use one of your courtrooms after hours. Can you do that?" And, uh, that's something that came from them. So that's the most recent volunteer activity that I have, which unfortunately ended, you know, back a few years ago. But the thing that I really found impressive and really enjoyed with that was seeing how much there is a space for the people that are the, you know, whether the, the consumers of the product or whatever you want to call what the school system provides. They really took an active role in making that group what they wanted to be. And the more opportunities I think there are to communicate with the people that are affected by the decisions this board makes, that's really leads to good outcomes for the people making the decisions and the people who are the subject of or the beneficiaries of those decisions.
Thank you. I'll pass the next question over to our treasurer, uh, Tim Austin.
Hello. Um, what is your motivation for applying for this position and what unique qualities will you bring to the board?
Well, as I said, the thing that I'm looking to do, my motivation is to have some opportunity to provide some service to the community. Um, my kid is now three, so we are calming down a little bit, or at home, just a tiny bit. Um, so I'm, I'm sleeping through the night generally and I'm apparently not busy enough. So that's my motivation. Cause my motivation to, to serve on the board is to find some time and space in my schedule to give something back. As far as the skills that I bring, I know that I don't have a particular background in education and I don't have any experience in a classroom. But I think the things that I do have, the skills that I do have and what I would try to bring to this board would be just very simple, listen and talk. That's what I do a lot of at work is I listen and I talk. And the types of conversations I have vary and the people I have the conversations with also vary quite a bit. Where I was on a Zoom call today and I, I think it was deliberate that the attorney I was talking with made sure to get up and open the blinds so I could see, yes, you are on the twentieth floor of your office and yes, you are in a very nice office, sir. And then I talk to clients who will come into my office off of a tractor. So being able to listen to people and talk to people across a wide variety of experiences, wide variety of educational backgrounds, that's something that I really take pride in and I think I can bring to this board. Because if I remember correctly, the, under the philosophy of the board section in the board policy manual, it said that the very first thing under the philosophy of the board before setting policy, I think that was B, but A was maintain two-way communication with the citizens. So maintaining two-way communication with the citizens of the district is something that I think I can, I can handle that. Something that I, I enjoy talking to people. It took me a while to, to realize that. Kind of, I don't know if they call it an introverted extrovert or extroverted introvert, whatever that is, but it's something that I enjoy doing and I can do. And that's the main thing that I would try to bring in terms of my particular skill set.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. Gold.
I'm going to take the liberty of changing my question a tiny bit since, um, my question is, what would you want an alumni of Celine area schools to remember about their education experience in the district? I actually think you might be able to have a slightly unique perspective. So I'd like to ask you, what would you like to see improved from your experience for current alumni? What, what did you take from it that you appreciate and what would you like to see done better?
Thanks. Well, the, the things I took from my time here at Celine that I appreciate are, I mean, there are, I'm not trying to speak ill of any other district, anything like that, but there are a lot of good school districts that prepare kids for college. And that's something that is, I think by most, you know, a lot of rankings will focus on that. And I know that that's an important part of the mission of this school district and any school district is to prepare kids for college and I appreciate that I had that. But the thing that I also appreciate is that there were other opportunities by virtue of being in a, in a small town, but also being so close to the resources of a place like Ann Arbor. I remember being aware of, yeah, my, my teacher, Dave Walters, was my music teacher in sixth grade. And it wasn't anything that was a formal part of the class, but he made us aware of what was happening, just the concept that there was a university musical society. That's something that I really appreciated as a student was getting a sense that this place that I was spending the next several years of my life, getting my education, it was a gateway to a broader sort of cultural experience, not just educational experience. And by the same token, when I was in high school, there was still a day where the kids from FFA drove tractors into school. And I don't know if that happens at Novi or Detroit Catholic Central or other schools that send a lot of kids to college. So that's something that I greatly enjoyed too, was seeing that this is a community that has a culture of its own. It has a history of its own, but it also has a chance to open up to a larger, broader world so that when you do go off to college, as I did, or even if you don't. When I went off to college, I knew that I could, I kind of had a little bit of a leg up because I went to school just up the road. But I had a leg up at knowing how to navigate a system where some of my friends in college who were really good students, but they didn't have that ability to communicate and work through a system that perhaps I did. As far as what I'd like to see more of, I would think that, that two-way communication, there's a lot of people here that are, you know, people that are my age that either went to Celine and are now having their own kids come in, or, um, there's somebody here I know in the audience who married one of my friends from high school and now they have a kid in Celine. So I think communicating with parents about alumni, alumni, and also the idea that economics and the, the way that the affordability of Celine has changed pretty dramatically from when I was in school. And I think that finding a way to communicate to parents and alumni, people that are now of that age where they have kids, to try to find resources where it's not just you send your kid to school in the morning and you get them off the bus at the end of the day. There's community education programs. The senior center has its space over at the middle school. Because the schools are such a huge part of what the community thinks of itself, thinks of itself as the district. Providing a chance for bringing those alumni back in, to offer those opportunities to them and also to tap their talents, to come in and offer programs through community education or just, find somebody who now, maybe there's somebody else out there who has the time to go and be an attorney coach for the mock trial team. And I got that call because I was an alumni and I hung around the track team when Bose was there. So reaching out to people to kind of let them know that there are opportunities here and to bring them in to provide, not just to give, but to get from them, I think that like that.
I'm going to pass the next question over to Secretary Berwick.
Hi, thank you. The board strives to center students' needs and outcomes when making decisions on behalf of the school district. And the primary way in which we do that is through policy. Please discuss any experiences you have with policymaking and/or your approach to building consensus when creating policy.
Well, with my day job as an attorney, it's a little bit of policy in everything I do. But on a very small scale, I'll acknowledge that. I don't have experience in, I have experience working with the Chamber of Commerce Board. I sat on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I've had experience with the Board of Social Services where I sat on that board for a while. But I don't have experience in, as I mentioned, education policy. I don't have experience in writing laws or any legislative thing like that. But I can see the value of the best outcomes, the ones that I am the most proud of. They're not where I have convinced a judge that I'm right and the person my client is going against, they're wrong. I'm most happy, and I think clients are as well, when the outcome is something that everybody can feel like they have some sort of investment in. A compromise that makes everybody a little bit upset is always going to be better than something where one person's really happy and one person's not. I'm not necessarily saying that all policy has to involve making people a little bit upset. But the idea that somebody is going to dictate what's going to happen is not a recipe for success. Because if somebody feels like this is coming down from above, they're not going to feel invested in it. Whereas if they feel they have an ability to, again, through the ideal, this ideal two-way communication, be involved in the decisions and the policy that's being set, then they're going to be invested in its success as well.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the next, the next question to Jason Tisitiz.
Sitting on the board means that you have to vote on controversial issues. Describe how you work through information regarding a particular topic and what your process is for making difficult or controversial decisions.
Well, I don't feel like, I, I think the thing that is most appropriate to say right now and the way I approach these sorts of things is the, "It depends." And that's something that I say a lot, quite frankly. In my job, I say, "It depends" a lot when people come in and ask a question. I'll say, "Can I do this, that, or the other thing? My neighbor did this, that, and this thing. What's going to happen?" It depends. I, I say that a lot to my kid. It depends. Is there a treat in the car? It depends. And I think that that approach, saying, "It depends," is really, it's really powerful. Because it shows that you don't have all the answers when you walk into a room. Nobody has all the answers when they walk into a room and finding a way to listen to the people that are invested in the decision you're making. Saying, "It depends," hearing from people, that's the best way to get to a conclusion. In terms of how to make a decision on a controversial topic, there's really no substitute for when you move beyond, "It depends," just staking out your position and then saying, "That's it." Because if somebody is, you know, wishy-washy all the way up to the decision, wishy-washy maybe is the negative way of thinking of it, but gathering information, saying, "It depends," right up until the moment that you know, okay, I have thought this through. I have listened to the people that have things to tell me and now I'm going to make my decision. Moving from that sort of, "It depends" to, "This is it." That I think lends a lot of credibility to the decisions you make. If everybody knows you're going to listen, you're going to take time, you're not going to prejudge the issue, but then after you've listened to the people that have what, have the things you need to know, to tell you those things you need to know, then you say, "That's it." That's, I think, the way that I would approach a controversial topic is, "It depends" right up until it doesn't. And then it really, that's it.
So is there a treat in the car? I'm going to, sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't riff.
It depends on how old constitutes a good goldfish in your mind, I guess.
My question is the last one and then we, considering the time, we will wrap it up quite soon after that. And we're a little, seems a little high. Uh, thank you. That's much better. Uh, the relationship between the board and the superintendent is an extremely important one. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with our superintendent?
Well, I think the, if I remember the policy manual, it says the board establishes and then the superintendent implements. And that's a, that's a dichotomy, sort of a split that I'm familiar with in my job where the client sets the goals and I, in that case, I guess in that metaphor, the superintendent, where they set the goals and then I make it happen. Knowing that that's the distinction that's spelled out between establishing and implementing. I think the best way that the people on the board can help the superintendent is to make really clear what the, the values are that are motivating the decision. Because a policy that is established or implemented from on high, as I said, is not something that's going to get buy-in. So if the superintendent is being given direction from the board and the, that person knows not just what the board wants them to do, but why it's important that the board has come to this conclusion, I think that will arm them with the sort of, talking about controversial issues, the sort of maybe certainty that they need to make a decision that could be controversial, knowing that the board has their back, not just in terms of that they have the authority to do this, but they have the, the imperative to do that.
Well, thank you very much, Luke. Nice seeing you again. It's been a while. If, uh, you wouldn't mind if you take about a minute or so to wrap up, if you have anything you'd like to, or anything you should have said and didn't get the chance, that would be great.
Nothing much that I can, that I can really think of at this point, except the thing that has changed in the past few years since moving out of town and moving into the country is, you know, getting a three-year-old in your life. And I don't know if this is true of everybody, but I'm finding out that a lot of people are kind of toddlers at heart. We all really are. So that's the thing that I am the most happy about in my, myself, the past few years, is learning that, you know, we're all toddlers and we all just kind of can be, you know, just, are you cranky? Are you hungry? And, um, with that in mind, I would really look forward to not just seeing that self-selected group of super high-achieving high schoolers that I saw a few years ago when I was doing the volunteering, but getting to, you know, see the toddlers and the people in kindergarten and the little kids all the way up through. I really would enjoy the idea of, you know, getting to be involved in that and making their education be everything it could be.
Well, thank you so much for your answers and your time this evening. Uh, Superintendent Kowalski will escort you out.
And Bose is still there?
Bose is for a while. All right. All right. I just will, I'll keep my distance. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I think what we're, we're, the plan is as follows. If you would please, uh, spend a very brief moment or so introducing yourself to the, to the board assembled, after which time we have, uh, one question each for you.
Okay.
And at the end, if you could just want to wrap- And at the end, if you could just want to wrap it up with a statement, that would be fantastic. And you have about fifteen to twenty minutes max. Thank you.
Okay. You all probably know, I'm Kelly Van Single. And you may or may not know that I ran in the previous election to be a Board of Trustee and really value that experience and the camaraderie amongst those running. And we have been in the district since 2013. I've been a Washtenaw County resident my entire life. Previously, we were in Ann Arbor Public Schools. I have two students in the district, Magdalene and Jillian, ages twenty and twenty-three respectively. They both have autism and they attend the Young Adult Program.
Well, excellent. I'm going to pass the first question over to Vice President Stevan.
Okay.
Hi, Kelly. Good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
How are you connected to Celine Area Schools? You talked just a little bit about that. And could you please describe your involvement with the district through committees or other volunteer activities, et cetera?
Yeah. Mostly to this point, most of my close collaboration and activity has been with the Special Education Advisory Committee. We, I first started serving on the CAC, oh, I think in about 2015 or 2016, and then as a building representative. And then during COVID, things, we really became very inactive at that time. And we went virtual. And so when things started to kind of come back to be in-person following COVID, we really wanted to relaunch our group. And I'm very happy to say that we've got six or seven very dedicated parent volunteers. We seek to have representation at each of the various building levels. And what we really seek to do is serve as parent mentors to other families who may be in need of special education services. Helping navigate that diagnosis, helping with parent education when it comes to understanding IDEA and MARS and their rights and responsibilities when it comes to being an equal member of the IEP team. When you first receive that diagnosis, when your child is younger, the process is very, very overwhelming. And that is one of the things that I've always felt a servant heart to do is, how can I mentor and advocate and educate other families going through what I went through, once went through as well? So the CAC, we, we meet once a month with our special education administrators. We are not a board sanctioned committee, so we, we do not follow OMA. But we will occasionally do extended public commentary or board updates so that we can share with you all the things that we are working on. One of the things that we've really tried to do, really inspired by our new Special Ed Director Julie Volker, is create a stu, like a parent guide with information, with what all the acronyms mean, what, what is the process? And so we've been working on that at a local level, but I've also been working on that for quite some time at a county level as well. Previous to being on the CAC here in Celine, I was on the Parent Advocacy or the Parent Advisory Committee, if you will, in Ann Arbor as well for about seven years before we moved here, three of those years serving as a co-chair for that group. And we would meet with administrators, we would give occasionally board updates to that Board as well. And once, after moving to Celine, I became very interested in being coming more involved with the WISD Parent Advisory Committee. So a few years ago, I was appointed by the Board here to represent Celine as one of our representatives. We have representatives from all of the outlined districts within the ISD. We partner with the ISD administrators, with the Superintendent there to review the annual ISD plan, also on parent education issues, and also to share information such as the millage, just to help people understand the importance of doing what we need to do to service our students. And they also share with us a lot of resources too, from OSAP and from the Michigan Department of Education. Resources like Michigan Alliance for Families, which is a state-funded organization to, again, help families navigate the special education process. As well as we get an annual update from the SEMS Office, which is the Special Education Mediation Services Office, which can help teams at times around the state that may feel stuck in their IEP process. And the whole idea behind SEMS and what we do on PACS and then the CAC through our parent mentorship is to help strengthen collaboration and consensus building and really try to have a mediative spirit so that we can prevent due process. Because once we go to due process, it's very expensive emotionally as well as financially for everybody involved.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the next question over to our new Treasurer, Tim Austin.
Thank you. What is your motivation for applying for this position and what unique qualities will you bring to the Board?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this for a year or so. It was about a year ago that I remember going down to the courthouse and turning in my, my paperwork to run. Really, my biggest inspiration is first and foremost, my own students, my own children. Their experience of being diagnosed and living with a disability has really led me over the last ten-plus years to get, to further my education. I am a 1996 graduate of Calvin College with Bachelor of Fine Arts in Music, in Vocal Performance. And, but I really feel like that liberal arts education prepared me for a vast array of experiences. And that led me to work at the University of Michigan in Conference Management Services. And after my children were diagnosed, I became very, very interested, especially in assistive technology. And how can assistive technology help our young people with disabilities to not only communicate, but to improve their executive functioning? And also how that assistive technology is laid out for us in IDEA and the IEP process and the assistive technology consideration process that you go through annually at the IEP. Became so interested in that, that I began volunteering with a nonprofit out of Toledo called ITalk Autism Foundation. I became an iOS assistive technology professional development presenter for them, as well as serving on their Board. And also began studies at Bowling Green State University to obtain my graduate-level certificate in assistive technology. And I wanted to do a full master's, but I was really waiting for the right complement to finishing out and fleshing out that degree. So it was six or seven years before I finished my master's. I returned to my alma mater, which is now Calvin University. In the last three or four years, they've really begun offering a wealth and breadth of online master's programs. And they have a Master's of Education program with an emphasis in literacy development and also inclusion. Most of my studies were in literacy, the science of, of reading, how you develop literacy. Because we do have a literacy crisis, not only in the state of Michigan, but nationally. Michigan ranks forty-third in fourth grade literacy scores. And I really feel that literacy is like one of the most powerful life skills that you can instill in anybody. And I really have the faith and confidence that anybody can learn to read and write. It does not matter what their disability is. It's a matter of helping them discover the right tools to make it happen so that they can really live their life out to their full potential. And so most of my secondary studies really play a role in parent education, parent advocacy, and being a resource for, for professionals and other families and caregivers.
Thank you. And I pass the next question over to trustee Dr. Gold.
Hi, Kelly. My question is, what would you want an alumni of Celine Area Schools to remember about their education and experience in the district?
When I think about something like that, I think of the word gratitude and just being so grateful for all of the many opportunities that our district has to offer, whether it's sports or performing arts or our ever-expanding CTE collaborations with the consortium and the county, as well as the way that we are starting to really try to embed all of those experiences to be pre-K to 12 and not just, you know, oh, I'm a senior, I'm graduating, now I need a post-secondary transition plan. I think our teachers' passion for STEM and for next-gen classrooms and for really developing students that have experiential learning opportunities is, is really paramount and stellar in, in our district.
Thank you. I'd like to pass the next question over to Secretary Berwick.
Hi, thank you. The Board strives to center students' needs and outcomes when making decisions on behalf of the school district. The primary way in which we do that is through policy. Please discuss any experiences you have with policymaking and/or your approach to building consensus when creating policy.
Right. I probably do not have a breadth of experience in policymaking as those who have already served on the Board, but I really appreciate the work that the Policy Committee does and have really enjoyed always watching the meetings online when their broadcasters are showing up in person. Policy work is very, very important work because we are looking at what is best for our staff, for our students, for our family, and how our district as a whole relates to the surrounding community. So I probably have more personal experience with, with the concept of consensus building and collaborative interactions. That's really what is at the heart of parent advocacy when it comes to, to special education. Because each student that qualifies for special education has an individualized education plan. And it's a very specific document. So in, in some ways, you could almost compare that as being like a policy book, maybe, for each student. It becomes, it becomes the guide with how we're going to access the Gen Ed curriculum and how we're going to adapt and modify, and which supplemental aids and services are needed to help that student as much as possible access that Gen Ed curriculum. Because there is one curriculum. There's the Gen Ed curriculum, and all students are Gen Ed students first. They may have a disability or other learning challenge that makes it necessary for them to be also a, a special education student. And through that work, we, we empower parents and the teachers and the administrators and everybody in that building team that's supporting that student in so-called policy work, if you will, in, in doing what is individualized best practice work for that student.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the second and last question over to trustee Tisitidis.
Sitting on the Board means that you have to vote on controversial issues. Describe how you work through information regarding a particular topic and what your process is for making difficult or controversial decisions.
Thank you. Yes, there's, board work is important work, and that's why there are seven. I would be one of seven. And for me, just in following various issues that have been important issues to our district over the last couple of years, preparing for those kinds of thought processes is by doing research, by seeing what published research says or what, what media says, what, what are, what are some ways that other states or even federally have we tackled this issue? What are some ways corporations are handling these sensitive issues? And I think you, you're, of course, your, your own personal experience will guide a bit about those challenges of decision-making. But ultimately, being a Board of Education trustee is a nonpartisan role. And I really view it as a role of public service to my community and to the students and to the staff. So you really need to be thinking beyond self. You really need to be thinking about the whole. And you really need to listen to understand versus listening to respond in your interactions and your deliberations. And then you collectively work together as one of seven to, to, to tackle difficult issues at times.
Well, thank you very much. I have the last question and then we'll wrap it up. The, the relationship between the Board and the Superintendent is extremely important. How would you help to ensure a collaborative working relationship with our Superintendent?
Yeah, I think I would obviously first and foremost look to the wisdom of the Board President because it seems that that role has the closest working relationship with the Superintendent. And it's very clear that the Board's role is supervising the Superintendent in terms of giving an annual, annual review. But there's also many points of collaboration along the way where we're bouncing ideas off of one another. The Superintendent themselves may be giving an update or a presentation or looking at other staff members who may be giving presentations. And I think, again, it's that spirit of collaboration and consensus building. Even when decisions are difficult, it's, it's working as a collective rather than self-promotion to, to, to accomplish the work before you.
Well, thank you very much. If you have any final statement before we usher you away from the table?
I've been doing a lot of just personal reflection in the past few days with these interviews coming up tonight and was kind of just looking at if I, if, if, let's say the election were this fall versus last fall, what are some touchstones or things that might be on my platform or areas of concern, might you say? Previously, it was very much literacy, again, with the graduate studies and, you know, empowering our teachers to know about the science of reading and, and how phonemic awareness and instruction is instrumental in helping our children learn literacy skills and how that life skill of literacy leads to so many things vocationally, the personal journey-wise, and being able to communicate with those around you as being a part of a community. I would say an additional area for 2025 might be a real big interest in our continuing, our CTE programs. Really inspired by the, the document that the ISD has recently put on their website for CTE and just describing how, you know, experiential learning opens up access and opportunity for, for all of our students. And how inspiring it is, I went back and viewed Ryan Rowe's presentation to the Board from last summer in which he was laying out some of the, the highway to come, if you will, for, for CTE throughout the county and the, the coming millage in November. I really was inspired his, about his focus on looking at CTE from pre-K through grade 12, not just, oops, I'm, I'm a junior in high school, what am I thinking about? I think there was a statistic in there of, you know, ten years ago or something, eighty percent of high schoolers really didn't have a post-secondary vision. And I think there's just great, great potential for looking into, to CTE, not only from a multidisciplinary learning perspective, but how we can be harnessing those skills about self-discovery and self-exploration for what do I want to do after I am done with school. Very, very inspiring to me. And I think also in this time of, of budget crisis that we may or may not be in, depending on what's coming down the pike with a millage not passing or things happening at the federal level, I think exploring all the different ways that CTE connects to our local universities and our local businesses is really, really powerful. There was another statistic in that booklet about the 127, where, you know, we say you have one position like a doctor and then under that, you would, by focusing on CTE and making CTE available, you then have two then-related semi-professional service positions, but then under that, there's seven. So you think about the ripple effect economically and self-education-wise that CTE would really bring for our students. And I, I also liked the, the little nugget about the, I think it's like every dollar that's invested in CTE would really result in a five-dollar payback to us, to the state economy. I, I think as public education entities, looking I think as public education entities, looking at those business partnerships and those possibilities with our local university is just a very innovative way to be connected to our community and be creative budget-wise when we need to.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. It's nice to see you again. It's been a while.
Yeah.
And our Superintendent, Rachel Kowalski, will either escort you out or lead you to the back of the room.
All right, I'm going to take off, so.
Oh, thank you. And for the rest of us, without objection, I hope, we can take a five-minute or so recess for body stretching and hydration. How's that?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. If you're coming here to watch the deliberation to determine our next school board member, you have reached your destination. See you. Here we go. So, we've heard from five candidates in person and one was unable to make it this evening, but gave us a lot of material. And I want to make sure that we all have that material at the front of our mind as well as our many notes that we took for the other candidates. So, in total, we have six. And as we discussed in a standing meeting as we were leaving, an organizational meeting as we were leaving here last week, one of the ways we thought we would try to narrow down our focus to a handful of candidates is to ask each of you to share which are the three candidates you really want to hear more about or want to really discuss or anxious to discuss. And I actually, I can't even follow my own advice at this point, but I think I have the three that I would like to have a conversation about with the rest of you, and I'd like to hear from the rest of you as well. So, we could either do this by making a note on a piece of paper if you want, but because this is a public forum, I would just invite you to share the three names that you would like us to talk about first. And I could start at the Jason end, or I could start at the Tim end, or we can just ask you to speak up as a name comes up. And another, just a point of clarification, if one name doesn't show up, it doesn't mean that that person is completely out of consideration. I just want to make sure that we're all clearly aware of that. All right, so how about we start with you, Jason? Do you have three in mind?
I do. Can I make two comments first? Am I allowed to?
You can make three comments if you want.
Okay.
This is us deliberating.
Microphone's mine now.
This is us deliberating in public about who is going to be our next board member.
I just wanted to point out that everybody on here knows, everybody that interviewed wants to interview, putting yourself out there is a difficult thing to do. So, I want to personally thank everyone that put their name forward. Second thing I'd like to point out is, as I'm taking notes, which most of them are mental, but I did write down a few things. Interestingly, three of the folks that we had interviewed tonight have been part of our community for four years, 18 years, or four years, 18 months, and six months. And I just thought that was interesting because we have those people that are the newest members of our community stepping up to serve. So, I want to point that out because I think that's important and I think that's important for everybody in our community to see and hear and witness because these are folks that have not been in our community very long. As a matter of fact, Kelly, 12 years, and she has a couple of years on me being in this community. So, folks that haven't always been, and Celine are stepping up to serve, so I just want to point that out.
For clarification purposes, because you mentioned the name Kelly, the other candidate is Julie Kelly.
I'm sorry.
And we have a Kelly Van Single.
Kelly Van Single, who I was referring to.
So, I suppose we should make sure that we use last names or first names or very clearly point out who we're talking about.
Very, yes.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Van Single is who I was referring to, 12 years. But I think that's important to point out is that we have folks that are not tenured Celine people that are stepping up to serve, and I think that's great. I think that proves that people want to come to this community and want to grow with the community. So, I think that's awesome that we see that. So, the three folks, and I was having a hard time narrowing this one down. So, in the spirit of keeping the list short, and these are in no particular order, I would like to discuss more Mr. Davidson, Ryan Davidson, Mr. Hanson, Nate, and could not be with us this evening, Ms. Kelly, Julie Kelly.
Thank you. I can either ask Lauren to go next or anyone who wants to speak up.
I'd like to ask to not go next since I was not at this organizational meeting and I'd like a moment to consider.
Of course. Good point. And in hindsight, I'm quite certain I never let you know what this process was going to be. Sorry, my oversight, my bad. Thank you.
I'm still reviewing my notes, so if Tim or Darcy or you is ready to go, that's great.
So, I guess I'm kind of a little open on my third, but I mean, I guess for right now, I'm at Nate and Julie Kelly right now. And some of the other ones, I mean, like Jason said, it takes a lot to step up and do this, and they all bring unique qualities. And so, I guess I'm just going to stick with those two at this point in time.
All right, I appreciate that. Darcy, Lauren, or me? I'm happy to go. I would like to talk a little more about Nate Hanson. I'd like to talk a little more about Luke Schmumberg. I'd like to talk about Kelly Van Single. And again, as you pointed out, not to disparage any of the other candidates, and everyone has a skill set that they're bringing to the table.
Okay, I'll go next. Again, in no order, and I think I have to put out the initial statement as well. This is really hard to do. It's hard to be a Superintendent. She just went through this. It's really hard to do this. It's really hard to talk about people when they're watching or in front of you. I would encourage all of these excellent candidates to please consider running for election. It's even harder than this process, I will not lie. I'm happy to answer any questions, but campaigning is challenging. But I saw such an overwhelming desire to give back to the community, and I think that that's so uniquely Celine, so I really appreciate that. And again, I'm not closing the doors here either. I want to hear what people have to say. But I'm going to mimic what Michael said. So, that's Nate, Luke, and Kelly.
This is really difficult because everybody has had so many great qualities, and I think they would all do well here. Yeah, so I would do Kelly Van Single, Luke Schmumberg, and Nate Hanson.
Your finger is hovering over the button, so anytime.
I was sort of smiling because those were the three candidates I wanted to talk about. But I also wanted to discuss, so I'm just, for clarity, Van Single, Hanson, and Schmumberg. I also wanted to acknowledge Julie Kelly, and it sounds like since she was on others' lists, we'll be chatting about her.
And Ryan Davidson, yes. All right, well, my job is just to facilitate this discussion at this point. And those of you following along at home, yes, six of us said we wanted to talk more about Nate Hanson, but that is not our vote at this point. So, let me open up the floor then to any comments you want to make about any of the applicants or, I'm not sure if it's applicants or candidates, let's just call them applicants Well, thank you, everybody. at this point. Because I sure have a lot to say.
Since I sort of delayed before, I guess I will go first.
Here we go. So, we've heard from, we've heard from five candidates in person and one was unable to make it this evening, but gave us a lot of material. And I want to make sure that we all have that material at the front of our mind as well as our many notes that we took for the other candidates. So, in total, we have six. And as we discussed in a standing meeting as we were leaving, an organizational meeting as we were leaving here last week, one of the ways we thought we would try to narrow down our focus to a handful of candidates is to ask each of you to share which are the three candidates you really want to hear more about or want to really discuss, your anxious to discuss. And I actually, I can't even follow my own advice at this point, but I think I have the three that I would like to have a conversation about with the rest of you. And I'd like to hear from the rest of you as well. So, we could either do this by making a note on a piece of paper if you want, but because this is a public forum, I would just invite you to share your, the three names that you would like us to talk about first. And I could start at the Jason end, or I could start at the Tim end, or we can just ask you to speak up as a name comes up. And another, just a point of clarification, if one name doesn't show up, it doesn't mean that that person is completely out of consideration. I just want to make sure that we're all clearly aware of that. All right, so how about we start with you, Jason? Do you have a three in mind?
I do. Can I make two comments first? Am I allowed to?
You can make three comments if you want.
Okay.
This is us deliberating.
Microphone's mine now.
This is us deliberating in public about who is going to be our next board member.
I just, I just wanted to point out that everybody on here knows, everybody that interviewed wants to interview, putting yourself out there is a difficult thing to do. So, I want to personally thank everyone that put their name forward. Second thing I'd like to point out is, as I'm taking notes, which most of them are mental, but I did write down a few things. Interestingly, three of the folks that we had interviewed tonight have been part of our community for four years, eighteen years, or, I, four years, eighteen months, and six months. And I just thought that was interesting because we have those people that are the newest members of our community stepping up to serve. So, I want to point that out because I think that's, I think that's important, and I think that's important for everybody in our community to see and hear and witness because these are, these are folks that have not been in our community very long. As a matter of fact, Kelly, twelve years, and she has a couple of years on me being in this community. So, folks that haven't always been in Celine are stepping up to serve. So, I just want to point that out.
For clarification purposes, because you mentioned the name Kelly, the other candidate is Julie Kelly.
I'm sorry.
And we have a Kelly Van Single.
Kelly Van Single, who I was referring to.
So, I suppose we should make sure that we use last names or first names or very clearly point out who we're talking about.
Very, yes.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Van Single is who I was referring to, twelve years. But I think that's important to point out is that we have folks that, that are not tenured Celine people that are stepping up to serve. And I think that's, I think that's great. I think that proves that people want to come to this community and want to grow with the community. So, I think that's awesome that we see that. So, the, the three folks, and I was having a hard time narrowing this one down. So, in the spirit of keeping the list short, and these are in no particular order, I would like to discuss more Mr. Davidson, Mr. Davidson, Ryan Davidson, Mr. Hanson, Nate, and could not be with us this evening, Ms. Kelly, Julie Kelly.
Thank you. I can either ask Lauren to go next or anyone who wants to speak up.
I'd like to ask to not go next since I was not at this organizational meeting and I'd like a moment to consider.
Of course. Good point. And I, and I, and in hindsight, I'm quite certain I never let you know what this process was going to be. Sorry, my oversight, my bad. Thank you.
I'm still reviewing my notes. So, if Tim or Darcy or you is ready to go, that's great.
So, I guess I'm kind of a little open on my third, but I mean, I guess for right now, I'm, I'm at Nate and Julie Kelly right now. And some of the other ones, I mean, like, like Jason said, takes a lot to step up and do this, and they all bring unique qualities. And so, so I guess I'm just going to stick with those two at this point in time.
All right. I appreciate that. Darcy, Lauren, or me? I'm happy to go. I would like to talk a little more about Nate Hanson. I'd like to talk a little more about Luke Schmumberg. I'd like to talk about Kelly Van Single. And again, as you pointed out, not to, this is not to disparage any of the other candidates, and everyone has a skill set that they're bringing to the table.
Okay. I'll go next. Again, in no order, and I think I have to put out the initial statement as well. This is really hard to do. It's hard to be a super, Rachel's, she just went through this. It's really hard to do this. It's really hard to talk about people when they're watching or in front of you. I would encourage all of these excellent candidates to please consider running for election. It's even harder than this process, I will not lie. I'm happy to answer any questions, but campaigning is, is challenging. But I saw such an overwhelming desire to give back to the community, and I think that that's so uniquely Celine. So, I really appreciate that. And again, I'm not closing the doors here either. I want to hear what people have to say. But I'm going to mimic what Michael said. So, that's Nate, Luke, and Kelly.
This is really difficult because everybody had, had so many great qualities, and I think they would all do well here. Yeah. So, I would do Kelly Van Single, Luke Schmumberg, and Nate Hanson.
Your finger is hovering over the button, so anytime.
I was sort of smiling because those were the three candidates I wanted to talk about. But I also wanted to discuss, so I'm just, for clarity, Van Single, Hanson, and Schmumberg. I also wanted to acknowledge Julie Kelly, and it sounds like since she was on others' lists, we'd be chatting about her.
And Ryan Davidson, yes. All right. Well, my job is just to facilitate this discussion at this point. And those of you following along at home, yes, six of us said we wanted to talk more about Nate Hanson, but that is not our vote at this point. So, let me open up the floor then to any comments you want to make about any of the applicants, or I'm not sure if it's applicants or candidates. Let's just call them applicants at this point. Because I sure have a lot to say.
Since I sort of delayed before, I guess I will go first. So, when I ran for the board, I thought it was important to look beyond your own kids. I think in my profession, I sort of look out for and take care of other people's children. And I think it's pretty easy to, to care deeply about your own kids and your kids' friends. But I'm really looking for someone who's student-focused beyond the kids in their backyard. And so, I'm looking for that. I'm looking for someone who understands the role of the job and its limits to the best of your ability once you are here and can work on a team collaboratively. And I also was looking for someone who might bring different skills or perspective to the board outside of those of us that are sitting up here now. So, with that, just a few thoughts. First of all, I have such a heart for special ed, and so I think Kelly Van Single's dedication to special education, you know, is not a perspective we have here and necessarily like as openly. And also, her interest in literacy would be really a great addition to this board. I actually think any of these people would have done great on the board. I was really impressed by the quality of the candidates tonight. I want to say that. It was hard. I really appreciated Nate Hanson's interview, as I guess we all did. He just strikes me as someone who's thoughtful and collaborative, and I was impressed by his input during our superintendent, you know, search for somebody to take the time that he did, give us his thoughts from behind the scenes, and really be willing to change his mind, which is a great candidate in leaders, to be able to listen to others and change their mind, I think is impressive. I have noted before and during the superintendent's search that I have great respect for veterans, so I like that. And we, we don't have anyone with a finance degree, I don't think, directly, and so his experience there, I know we have people with financial experience who have run businesses, but I thought that was a great addition. And he's new to the district, which I don't think necessarily has to be a bad thing. I think that whole fresh eyes idea is a good one, but maybe has enough experience here to, you know, have an idea of what's going on in the district. I would say Mr. Schmumberg was not a person who jumped out at me on paper immediately, but I was really impressed by his interview. And I also looked down our table, and we all are probably around a similar age. And I think having both an alumni of, a relatively recent alumni of the schools, somebody with a legal background, which we certainly have needed at various times, someone with a small child, and, you know, someone of a slightly different generation could be a really big benefit. And I thought he had a very measured responses with the, I wrote down humility, which I also think is important in people seeking to be in a leadership role. So, I don't know. I'm struggling. I'm interested to hear what other people say.
I'm struggling too. So, I appreciate hearing your comments. I can't wait to hear everybody else's. I did want to talk about Kelly Van Single for just a second because I wrote down something very important that I think that we should talk about first before we talk about that particular applicant. She does sit as a board-appointed, in a board-appointed position that would need to be given up. Has anybody, we, I don't think we're able to like do a follow-up question, but I'm, I'm thinking in my mind, because I can clearly see how much that advocacy work means to her, and so, like Brad and like Darcy with substitute teaching, there'd be a choice there. I was chair and coach and all this stuff before it was given up. So, I, I think that's something we need to think about, and I don't know how to answer that because it wasn't part of the questions that we were going to ask everybody. So, I was just wondering if we could talk about that.
Let's talk about it. My understanding is that any board from the policies, any board member can serve on any, in any capacity in any school activity or even board activity, except to be the chair or the leader of that organization. So, if you were a chair of your PTO, that's why you had to step down from that. But I don't know precisely what the nature is of the SEAC in relationship to this board. She's not receiving payment, correct?
So, in, in my understanding and my perception, because they present to the board on an annual basis, she is one of the chairs of that organization, and she was appointed by the board. So, to me, that's a conflict of interest. If we're appointing her to do something else, it's kind of like the rule about how this team shouldn't be on the other side of the table, like because we shouldn't be involved in something else. It's in the Board Operating Procedures written as chair. I think there's a lot of terminology in, depending on the club or organization, but it says it's a conflict of interest.
It's a conflict of interest. Thank you for pointing that out. That can be easily resolved by having her step down.
I, and I would always ask what she would want to do about that and wouldn't assume she would go one way or the other, and I don't know.
I, I think, Jen, what you're asking is, since we can't ask her if she's aware that she would have to step down if she's a chair of the SEAC, right? Yeah, okay. Right. So, I just want to, because I, I don't want to make that decision for her, obviously, and we need to make a decision. But I do know, like Darcy now substitutes in a different district, and that's, that's always an option if she wants to continue that, that type of service too. So, if she's listening, hopefully, you know, she, she knows that. But that is, that is a, yeah, that was a good point to bring up. I didn't catch herself. Thanks.
Are we going to land the plane on that time?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Just to that, just to that matter, I thought she said it wasn't a board-appointed position and like the WISD is.
Yeah.
But she's on the SEAC.
Right.
And I'm looking at the website and I can't see.
It's under the BOP. Hang on one second. Let me, because I'm sure the people following along, if they are at home, wouldn't know the BOP quite as clearly as we would.
No, and I don't either. I just, I specifically thought she said it wasn't.
So, the way it's written, it doesn't have to be an appointment. It's any club, any activity, any endeavor is, is the way it's written, and I can log in and pull it up, but it's, it's pretty clear.
You had just mentioned it was a board-appointed position, and I think she said.
Yeah, one in the past was, and I think she might have one at the ISD. And if she did have one at the ISD, that would need to go too.
It's Daisy Sharman and Tara Hayes now.
Okay. All right. Let me.
Sounding to me like it's a non-issue.
It's not to me. I think it's a conflict of interest.
I'm saying if she's not in any of those leadership positions, that's where I'm saying it's not an issue.
So, under, under page, on page twenty-seven of the BOP, "Board Members Cannot Chair A Committee, A Subcommittee, A Club, Or Even Those Of A Board Member/Student Of Any District Endeavor To Avoid Potential Conflict Of Interest And Perception Of Undue Influence."
Yep. That's pretty well exactly what I said. If she's the chair, she can't be the chair.
Okay. But I think I'm saying she is in a chair position.
Yes, which is, changes easily. And as, as I said earlier, I already made my point earlier, so I won't reiterate it, but she could step away from that quite easily if need be. And, yeah.
Okay. So, I mentioned Julie earlier. I would like to, I thought she, obviously she could not be here today to do the interview, and it would have been great if she would have been able to do the interview. I think with her recent retirement, the idea of her coming on to the board could bring a unique perspective to a, for the, for the staff members, and I think that would be very helpful for us. I think we've all kind of heard some of the staff members kind of grumbling a little bit and climate and culture, and I think that perspective on the board would be very, very helpful. So, I, I really like that about Julie, and then you just read about how she works with, with the kids, and, yeah, I thought, I thought, I thought she would be, I think she'd be very well, be very good for this position. Nate really impressed me. The things that he said were impressive. I, I reflected back when I saw his name first come up, similar to Lauren did with the way he communicated through the superintendent's search. He was at the, at the meetings. I thought that was impressive, or the interview sessions. And then kind of just seeing him work through, the more he heard, he was willing to make some changes. So, so, and then kind of his selflessness is really important to me. I think that's important to be selfless in this position because we have forty-seven hundred students. It's not about us. It's about, it's about them. So, he, he really, he really impressed me with that, and I think his finance and his critical thinking, I, I liked his answer with the question number four on the policy and normalized deviation, and I think that was, that was, that was impressive. I liked that, so.
Yeah, I noted that phrase as well. That was, that was a great phrase. Well, if I can speak for a few seconds, I don't have my notes clearly laid out for the two people I wanted to talk more about, but I did want to say, from Kelly Van Single's perspective, I have, there are, in education, there are a lot of acronyms. There's a lot of alphabet soup. And not only does she know that alphabet soup, but she's actively been engaged with it, and I can just run down some of the ones. The SEAC, of course, the IEPs, the, she mentioned the OSEP, the Michigan Department of Education, the IDEA, the Act, and CTE several times, STEM, et cetera, et cetera. She has a solid awareness of a lot of the issues that we grapple with or discuss even at our board meetings. And in fact, just in this past, just looking at the notes that I took, these are things that have been discussed regularly at our, our board meetings. I appreciated the content. Haven't heard enough about assistive technology in this district, but I was really glad to hear that that was an interest of hers as well. And literacy development, and she had a very clear understanding of the nonpartisan nature of our, of our work as board members. So, I'm, I was, I was very impressed with what she brought to the table in that respect, not just talking points. I mean, it's not saying the other people had talking points, but clear grasp of the issues that are before us and the various stakeholder groups that we're, we have to interact with.
Michael, do we want to just, because we're kind of going all over and some, talking about all of them and some talking about a few of them, do we want to kind of go through the list and go through and talk through an individual? Or? Because we're kind of jumping around.
What are you, what are you recommending?
Well, we, I heard some names listed, so we could kind of talk about those individuals as a group. We said it doesn't necessarily mean we're taking anybody off, so we could talk about it. I just, I didn't know how we wanted to move forward to kind of build consensus.
I'm open to suggestions from the rest of the committee, the board.
I guess since Lauren and I have already kind of gone through the process in which we thought it was going to be where we would talk about the candidates that we kind of wanted to talk about.
And I still would like to make notes on the candidates that I would like to.
And we can circle back if we want to. I mean, I'm fine with that.
Sure. I don't have, I, like I said, give me a minute or two to get my notes and thoughts together about Nate and Luke.
Do you want me to, to go about the three? Okay. And these are not in order. I'm just going in order of my notes. So, I'd start with Nate. I think one thing that I learned, being on the Board of Education is one of the best things that you can try to bring to a situation is calm and steady leadership and decision-making. And I, I saw that in the recommendation letters. I saw that in the conversation tonight, so I wanted to elevate that. Like Jason, I thought the whole spread of applicants was really interesting because on one hand, I was super excited, and I think Lauren, you made the point about seeing somebody who is perhaps in a different generation than most of the people at the table and being an alum, but that I was also really energized by having new faces and having, having people involved in the community that haven't had an opportunity to do so. And one thing I struggle with a little bit is kind of the new Celine, old Celine. Where does everybody fit in? Did you go here? Did you not go here? And that kind of like the sorting hat starts with, are you from here? And I, I, sometimes I love that commitment to the community and the, the desire to give back, but sometimes I think it is a little bit of a barrier to people who are newer to the community. And so, with Nate, that was one of the things that I was impressed with because he was newer to the community in eighteen months, but in those eighteen months, he dug in, and I, I thought it was very interesting, the story about how they, they had the conversation about his son who was in high school, which is, two high schoolers is very hard to move in high school. And the child wanted to be here so bad that the child, it must have been the son, came early with the, in the grandparents. Like, that's commitment, and I think it just proved to me how much he wants to be here and how much he wants to give back. So, I thought that that was really interesting. I obviously thought he was very authentic in his delivery. I think we would need to coach him on how procedural operations of the Board of Education work. So, we, we don't have such long meetings, but I could, I clearly thought he was excited about the opportunity. If I look at, I said one thing about Kelly, but just because I wanted to get it out there and get us thinking about it, but going back to Kelly, you know, obviously, I, I know her a little bit from the campaign trail and appreciate her commitment to special education students. I thought that the literacy, someone else mentioned that. I thought that that was very interesting. She clearly knows those two particular facets. I paused a little on the last two answers. When she talked about, she said she wanted to talk about like what her platform would be or her areas of concern would be in 2025. They didn't sound like areas of concern to me. They sounded like positives, but she had mentioned the science of reading at all, CTE, and budgets related to CTE. Some of that answer was more of Kara Davis's role within our district and not a board member's role, so I think that there would be some education around roles and responsibilities of a board member. I loved her answer on gratitude. I thought that that was really good, and I, I really see her authenticity and gratitude coming forward, putting kids first. She used the words collaborative twice, consensus building twice. I thought that that was really good. I didn't really love the answer on how to build a good relationship with the superintendent was to look to the board president on what to do.
I thought that was a great answer.
I'm sure you did. As a former board president, because I remember having the exact conversation with Mr. Brad Kirby, as I said, it's one person, one vote. We are all equal. You need to develop the individual relationships. You need to make, like, we all need to make decisions in our own different ways and appreciate all of our differences and our strengths. So, I was pretty surprised that she said that after talking about collaboration and consensus building. Luke, going back to him, I agree with Lauren. Was a surprise to me because on paper, I was like, oh, okay, you know, I see alum, recent, small child. I appreciate us needing to have some different ages of children and interactions. I like that. Three years old. We don't have a three-year-old, so that was, that was fun. And I thought it was really interesting that in his professional life, he gave back with the mock trial. I thought his answers around listening and talking to people across many backgrounds, I wish more lawyers would think like that. It was very calm. Again, going back to the calmness in leadership and the stability. He had read the Board Operating Procedures, which I kind of liked. I thought that was really nice. He talked about Celine having a culture of his own, but a perspective and a larger picture, a little bit more globally, and I thought that that was put really, really well, and I thought it referred to our compass a bit. Like Kelly, he talked about gratitude, which I appreciate. And I thought his closing was very, just reflective and measured, and I think he'd be interested. And I think he'd be interesting at watching his decision-making on some controversial issues. All of the applicants, those were just the three I talked about, but I would love to talk more about Ryan, I'd love to talk more about Julie that other people had mentioned too. It's interesting because some of the things that I liked the best about the applicants were in total opposition to things I liked about other applicants. Like, oh, he's an alum and he's, you know, of a different generation, oh, Nate's new, he's been here eighteen months, like. But they both have qualities, so I guess I'm, I'm struggling a little bit in my head with what's the most important with this team mix and how we might be able to work together. Those are my reambles.
Could you just clarify something, you and Lauren, when you mentioned generations, are you talking about the fact that he's homegrown versus, no, that he's young or old? I don't know where you, I, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm not trying to be ageist. I'm trying really carefully not to be ageist, but I mean, he graduated from high school and college well before I did. And I'm assuming well before anyone here did.
Who is that, Luke?
Luke.
Did he?
After, after, though I wish, after.
And, and having a three-year-old is just something I'm a little bit further away from and being at that stage and having that perspective and excitement to, to be heading towards PK.
He had computers in the classroom, presumably. I don't think, what? Yeah. So, so we could be replacing Susan's youth. Anyways, I'm not trying to be ageist, it was just something I noticed. And somebody who's willing to serve, and I also noticed that about Celsius, somebody who's willing to serve in a different generation is going to have had a different educational experience, a different parenting experience. And most of our administrators and leadership are going to be of a certain gener- generation. And so, I just think building younger leaders is important and it's not something that happens enough. So, if somebody, and he's also very qualified, he's not, you know, and so, at least in my view, he seems very qualified. So, I thought he had a lot to offer for someone who, you know, that's what I'm saying.
Clarification on what you meant by generations, because it sounded, okay, I, I, I understand now, thank you so much.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I was, yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't unclear.
No, 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 it's fine. So, if I can throw my two cents in on, so Nate and so, just a couple of notes. So, I, I don't want to double down on things you all have said already, but I did appreciate the references to the compass, which meant awareness of their compass. This is regarding Nate now. Sticking with the decision, this is true indeed, and sometimes we do have to make some difficult decisions up here at the front. And I did appreciate, this is before Dr. Kowalski was, had even, before Nate was even aware that there would be an opening on this board, he did go out of his way to welcome Dr. Kowalski, and I appreciate that. And he did stick through all this, and I just, where I had the opportunity to meet him. I also met him once or twice during the Scott Robertson, when he came to visit. Nate was one of the parents who showed up to participate in the parent listening sessions. So, obviously, even being here such a short time, without knowing that this position would be open on the board, he was, he, he, he's showing a trajectory toward rapid engagement i- in the district, and I greatly appreciate that. If I could talk about Luke for a few seconds, I did get a sense of his understanding of ed policies. He understands the idea of compromise, and I appreciate that a great deal. I appreciated his comment about also sticking with the decision regarding controversial issues once we arrive at our destination. And finally, he does seem to be pretty well aware of the role of the superintendent, especially in a perspective of values and the rationale. He mentioned the values and the rationale and decision-making, and that, to me, was, was very important. And I had a couple more things to say about, about Kelly Van Single, but I think they're all things that you all have said, and I appreciate that, thank you.
I will jump in then. So, listing off my three, I'm just going to throw out a couple of things. So, I listed Ryan. So, Ryan shares a desire to build a safe and secure environment for kids and staff. That's something that is important to me. I can assure everybody on this board that within the next several years, you're going to want as much safety and security know-how. I can just assure you that that's going to be a top priority over the next several years here and in most school districts. So, his, his experience there, which is more vast than mine, would be certainly ideal. Secondly, I had brought up Julie Kelly, who didn't have an opportunity to interview, unfortunately, with us. I went through her packet, I thought it was very interesting to have building administrators, right, or building administrator, write a letter of recommendation. I thought it was excellent to have a student, an alum, an alum, write a letter of recommendation. I like that. You know, we, I had heard a number of times that a lot of times, we want to replace an outgoing member with someone that's similar, Brad, dedicated teacher, that's certainly what Julie is. Nate, if he's an airline pilot, he can think quickly, critically, problem solve. I can't think of a more ideal candidate for a board position than someone that can, that can make decisions and make correct and accurate decisions quickly, that's vitally important. Something I was, I was thinking about though, because Ryan and I actually both stood for interviews a few years ago when there was a board position open. And I had made a comment at the beginning of this process to Michael that I was the only one that had done that, but that's not true. Lauren had done it, Darcy had done it, and Tim did it. And interestingly, none of us were selected. And interestingly, all of us have been elected. I think that is a lesson for us on the board here, that we don't always get it right. And sometimes our first choices, second choices, third choices might, might not be the best ones. I would, I would look at that from a reverse angle too, in that we, we want to look at folks that have had the opportunity to serve previously on boards and, and see if that's a fit there as well. But that would be, those would be my comments on the, on the three. Uh, three candidates that, that I think were most ideal for us.
Oh, you want to speak, or is Darcy ready?
Darcy hasn't had a chance, so.
I know, I'm waiting for Darcy. Is Darcy ready?
It's a really hard decision to make. I, I saw so many great qualities in everybody who applied. And I did want to note, because obviously PTO has a special place in my heart, that, that Ryan has stepped up too, to be a part of the, the community in the short time that he's been here. So, I appreciate that. And I don't know Nate Hanson, except primarily from the superintendent interviews. And I went back, and it was, I remember that night really just being impressed with someone who came and came consistently, so commented on the first round, commented on the second round, stuck around, went to talk to the candidates. To see that decision-making almost in real time was impressive, to see that. He took in new information and adjusted his thinking and came out with a different decision. So, that was, that was pretty amazing to be able to see. And Julie Kelly is a vulnerable teacher here, she was my kiddo's teacher way back when. And she would bring a lot to the table as well. And Celsius seemed also well-versed in education and excited to be here, and they've clearly moved here. And both he and Luke have little ones coming into the system. It didn't, I, I did not know Luke, but I was really impressed with his interview. That I found him to be, we talk about calm and steady and very measured, but also very thoughtful. I think that his answer on policy and Nate, Nate's answer on policy were my favorites. But Luke talked about controversial issues and coming into that room with humility. And that you have to acknowledge, you don't have all of the answers, you don't know everyone's perspective, and you need to listen and learn and converse and then come to a consensus and honor that. So, that really stood out for me. The fact that I had not thought that we were all similarly aged, but we really are. And so, so, you know, having someone who is younger is probably an asset and something that's missing from, a voice that's missing from this perspect, from up here. Kelly spoke to two things that are very important to me, which is the special ed population, but also literacy. And when I, and we talk about literacy, and it's not necessarily, we, we talked about reading and writing, but literacy, as far as comprehension is concerned, because not every kid is going to read or write. And, and that's what she talked about with the adaptive communication. I was in a classroom today where one kid was verbal, one was signing, and one was using their, what we call the talker, which is the iPad with the software on it to communicate. And so, students show up differently. And we need to be able to see them as students first and educate them to the best of their abilities. So, that, I think that she's got a unique perspective in that regard, having two kids in the special ed program. And we have a lot of special ed kids, there are, I went and looked at the numbers, and it's, I think we average about fifteen percent in our district have IEPs. And someone who knows that process and understands the policy, because when I, you know, when I go to work as a parent pro, I'm one part of that team, but the parent has a different perspective on what they want, the student has their needs, and then this, what the staff can provide, all need to come together and work successfully for that student. So, having that experience is something that she brings to that table. Again, I'm really struggling with this, it is, it's a really hard decision to make. I also, you know, you talked about what they bring to the board, but, and working with the board, but I really, I'm still thinking about this, but I want to make sure that we're picking someone who's right for the community and, and just not necessarily a complement to what we offer, but as someone who's going to work for the students, whoever they are.
Jennifer.
Very good point, thank you. And Jason, thank you for your reflections, it's so interesting because Michael and I weren't the two that went through that process, and, and I think it's interesting for us to reflect upon that process for you all and, and the fact that you're sitting here, I think that that's very astute, so thank you. I also wanted to just stand still and appreciate Ryan and Julie and Celsius because I didn't speak specifically to them, and I appreciate that Darcy did some as well. The energy, you know, that, that Celsius has a small child and time to give, and he picked this because it was about kids and had that educational background, I really, really appreciated. Celsius, please consider running for the Board of Education in the future. Ryan, you're so eager, and I'm looking at him, he's sitting here, you're so eager. And I also noticed that PTO thing, shout out PTO, PTA, so eager to be involved in such unique capabilities that were so captivating earlier as well. And to Jason's point, such an important thing with safety and security and, and things like that now and, and coming up. And so respectful of us in the process, I really appreciated that. Julie, I've been struggling a lot with. I adore our teachers and all of our staff. And so, for me, it's, it's, it's very challenging because she has such foundational trust created with so many of our families and our community. So, Darcy brought up the community, and deep expertise, I, I guess, you know, I, I don't know. For me, it's how do we partner together with those subject matter experts? It has been advantageous to have previous teachers from, well, Jenny taught in Celine a while ago, and then she was obviously in another district, Brad in Manchester, and now Celine. There's positives on both sides, like having somebody at the table with us, but also respectfully partnering with them and leaning in to their, their, their thoughts always. I mean, we were just having a conversation in the back of the room about a, a teacher that I won't embarrass up here. But it's just so important. So, this has been a very challenging process, and I'm reflecting on all of your comments too, so thanks.
I think it, it sounds like we've all had an opportunity to talk about the people, and I think I need to be a meanie here and put this to, have us do what might be the first of one or two votes, or it might be the only vote. So, I would like us to please ponder for a second, this is pause for ten seconds. And if you're ready, I'm just going to go up the table or down the table, starting with Jason, and ask which candidate you would, well, I can start at Tim, Tim's end, but.
I've, I've got no problem.
All right.
Reflecting on everything that, that everyone has said, I would, I would say that if I were to have to cast a vote for one of, and one of the six. Yes. But if I was, if I was forced, if I was forced to make, make a one decision, I would, I would vote for Nate right now.
Lauren Gold.
Kelly.
Julie Kelly or Kelly Van Single?
Kelly Van Single.
You, Jennifer Stebbin?
Really hard, but at this moment, I would say Nate.
I'm going to cast my vote at this point for Kelly Van Single. You're not allowed to say it's really hard, Darcy.
It is really hard. Kelly Van Single.
And Tim?
I would cast it for Nate.
And this is why there's supposed to be an odd number.
That's exactly.
Well, that's true. Now, by the way, as I was, as I have been reviewing a lot of other districts, some of them are really hard when it comes to, or harsh when it comes to talking about vacancy votes. They only allow two if there's a deadlock. And if there is a deadlock, that's when we call in the services of Naomi Norman, Superintendent of the WISD. And she would very likely make, have to reach a decision between these two candidates. But since we have it narrowed down to two, let's, let's go back and just comment. And all it takes is just one person to say, I'm going to change my vote to the other person to end the deadlock.
Just as a point of interest, this position is only going through twenty-twenty-six, right? So, it's about a year and a half, and then they have to run.
Yes, to clarify, it's November twenty-twenty, December twenty-twenty-six is when it ends. And that was very clear.
But they would have to run in twenty-twenty-six if they wanted to.
They would not have to run, they could run if they chose to, yes.
Can I ask a question about that, Michael? I meant to ask it a, a couple of meetings ago. Because this was taking over Brad's seat, which was four years. Is there, is there in our board policy that I didn't, that?
It's actually in the Michigan compiled law. So, the deal is Brad, I'll use my fingers, Brad was elected for four years, the electorate chose him. He stood, he served half a year. The next ti, and it's, the next time we have an opportunity for the electorate to select or to vote for a, a board member is November twenty-twenty-six. At that first, at that point, and that's how, in fact, that's how Lauren was elected, she filled a partial term, a partial six-year term. So, she's filling the four years vacated from Aramada Boat Swain, who, who, who moved out of, out of the district. So, that's how that works. And I'm sure we'd be very clear with that, whomever we chose tonight, we'd be, I'd be, make sure that they understood that clearly. And I'm sure we'd be very clear with that, whomever we chose tonight, we'd be, I'd be, make sure that they understood that clearly. Tim?
I, I just go back to Nate's interview, um. And then kind of the, what everybody else has kind of said about Nate as well, the calm, steady. I, I was just really impressed. I, I think he would be phenomenal for this position. Kelly, I think would be great too. I think, uh, she has, um, done a ton. With CAC. I also think, you know, you're looking back at the, uh, process in which we've gone through this before. We have had board vacancies after an election before too, and, and it, and, and just because like one person has run for the board doesn't necessarily mean that person. Cause I don't think we've ever picked somebody that was. That, for a vacancy that had just run for the board. So, um. So anyways, so I, I think, uh, that doesn't. Qualify her anymore and it doesn't disqualify her anymore. But I'm just, I, I, I really. I like Nate's demeanor and, and the way he handled himself through that superintendent search. And then, uh, even Michael, you had mentioned, uh, how he's actually communicated with both of the superintendents afterwards and developed, started to developing a. Board superintendent relationship.
I believe he called it the connective tissue.
Yeah, like I said, I was, it was. Very interesting and heartening to see his thought process as we went through. Um, I would say that it did take a, you know, a lot of people submitted a lot of different things and I did go through all of them and. Uh, Kelly did have, there was a lot more to what Kelly, um. Gave to us. You know, and. To be. I guess upfront, there's a, there's, she's more of a known quantity for me. She answered several, um, candidate questionnaires, participated in a couple of community forums. So I think she's been pretty well vetted and you can see sort of what her, she provided her answers from. Those forums previously and, and filled in, you know, we only had a few questions here. But she filled in a lot of, uh, other information that sort of solidified her for me. Because, uh, you know, and reading her things that, you know, not sure she and I are on the same page with everything. But I thought that she talked a lot about consensus building and collaboration and working with different parties to come. To. Positive outcomes for students. And not to say that Nate can't do that, but I think that she's had actual experience doing that. Uh, and has, you know, we did receive a letter of recommendation from several parents. So while I'm excited that there are, you know, Luke and Mark, uh, Celsius and Nate are, and somewhat Ryan are, are fairly new. She can hit the ground really running.
That's pretty well a phrase I was going to say, that she would be able to hit the ground, um, pretty quickly and, uh, and get going. She's been thinking about this position. For a long time to, to your point, Tim, that, that she had run before. She's been asked a lot of questions, uh, of me, not this time, but. Before, when she ran, she learned a great deal about the workings of the district already and the board, board work. So I think she would be really fast to get going and up to speed.
If, if I could pop in. And I've had, I've had the opportunity to talk to Kelly a couple of times. I think, uh, I think she is terrific and she is, uh. Definitely a huge advocate for the special ed program, no doubt. I look at it slightly different. The electorate had their opportunity to elect Kelly. And they didn't. They had the opportunity to have her come in anything but seventh in a seven-person race. She came in seventh. So if we're looking at it from that perspective of. What, what the electorate wanted this time around, she wasn't one of them. Doesn't mean that she's not qualified, doesn't mean that, um. Doesn't mean that she wouldn't be a fantastic board member. I'm just looking at it from that perspective since. Uh, something like Darcy said, we all answered those questions and. You know, made, you know, made the decision. So, I mean. She has a known quantity. I like that because, you know, we. We've had a chance to talk to her. We've had a chance to, uh, to learn about her. But I'm looking at it from a perspective of. The. I don't, it, 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 it's a difficult. It's a difficult decision. My, my main concern was her advocacy is so strong. It almost seems like she's one topic. She's singularly focused only on the special ed program.
Not the CTE that she talked about at great length and not the literacy that she talked about at great length and.
I stopped counting, but she mentioned special education seventeen times before I, before I stopped counting.
Obviously, yeah, that's, that's her major frame. I got that.
And I'm a huge supporter of CTE, as is Darcy. Uh, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying that. It. One of the. One of the things that, uh, a lot of people thought previously of the board was. That it became too singularly focused on certain things. Special ed is certainly a good thing to be singularly focused on for sure, but I'm just looking at it from, from that perspective. That. How much, how much of it is going to only be focused on that? And whereas someone fresh coming in can have completely different perspectives.
I mean, you make a good point, but at the same time. For example, just to use your, your background in, in, in security and so forth, is you have a great deal of expertise there, but. That doesn't come up in conversations at every single board meeting, all the way through the board meeting, nor will special education all the way through. So, I mean, I, I don't, not trying to make it personal, I'm just saying, using your, your expertise as an example. We've had literacy specialists and they've been able to function on a lot of other areas as well. And we've had a Title IX expert who's able to function in a lot of other areas as well, so. And we've had a pediatrician. But that's all she talks about. We still do. I've heard, uh, as, as a coordinator of this, this deliberation, I had, don't think I've heard yet from, uh, Lauren Gold about your, uh. Your choice. And if you wanted to pitch in and.
Or me.
Or you, if, I'm, I'm, again, I don't know how, uh, rock solid your, uh, your support of Nate is versus Kelly.
I am not rock solid. Um, I. So. I just always go back to like someone who cares deeply for special ed and the students who are most vulnerable about, uh, among us. Is someone I want to know more about and have, uh, a degree of trust. But I do also, I'm, have some expertise in that matter and so. I mean. I, I could, I, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about Nate and the finance part, which is something Brad, although he wasn't trained in finance, brought, so. And I looked up the vote numbers as well and. That is difficult because I believe in democracy. So I don't know. I'm struggling. I can't make, I mean, I still am team Van Single, but I could be.
Well, girl, I think we all know running a campaign is a different game than.
Yeah, I mean, that is true.
A trustee. It is a process and, um.
Yeah.
One that is different for everyone, yeah.
Yeah.
And we, and we have had, we have had someone who was appointed that, um, lost an election in the past.
I think either of these candidates would really bring a lot to the district and to this table, so I'm struggling, but.
Could I?
I still lean toward. Kelly, who has, uh, uh, done some probably pretty thankless work. Advocating and I don't think being an advocate is a, a bad thing as long as you can also be able to see things and collaborate with others, so. Um, and I think in, one thing I also wanted was somebody whose interactions with the district have always been sort of respectful and positive and collaborative. And I, I think that, and I, I'm not downing, this is just something positive about her. I have no doubt that Mr. Hanson would be exactly the same. And I would normally question a little bit vetting, but I'm assuming that pilots are very well vetted, so. Yeah, in the Navy. So I don't know, I, you know, I still, I'm, I'm still. I'm not going to change my vote at this moment.
Well, let me, if I can help, chip away at your, your reluctance to move over to Nate. I, I'm not prepared either at this point. But there are a couple of things I wanted to point out and gee, I hope I can remember the two. One, uh, uh, interesting point is that he didn't want to reach out to me at first. I know he reached out to you, Jason, at one time, but he. He actually approached the, the principal of the high school and asked if, and I hope I'm not telling tales of the school here, so to speak. But he asked, well, what are you looking for in a board, in, in a board member? And, and Teresa Stager said, I don't think I'm supposed to answer this, right, McVeigh? And I said, no, you're not. Uh, so he was so nervous.
I just want to stand still by that because why wouldn't Teresa as a leader of the district have voice?
And, and also just to clarify, I've never, I had never met Nate until this.
And I'd like to prefer to keep going through to the end of the, the story and then feel free to, to, to rattle away at it. He's not sure, she was not sure she should be the person, uh, she's not the only. And I mean, the point is Nate was concerned about overstepping his, his bounds and he, and when I. Called him and I wrote to everybody, all the candidates and said, would you, would you like to sit down and chat about the board? And he says, that's okay, that's acceptable. And I said, yes. In fact, it's expected, uh, to have a conversation about what the board work is. So. I get the spec, the sense that he's going to be extraordinarily respectful of, of the process and the procedures, so if that helps a bit. The other is. Talking about Kelly Van Single hitting the ground running of having a finance background i- is helpful. We. Right now we have one pretty good, two pretty good, uh, people who are interested and engaged with finance and that would be, uh, Jason and Tim. And it would be nice to have a third person. So if that, uh, in, and I think that as board president, that's probably where I would put Nate. So, so if that helps at all, uh, chisel away your perspective.
I just want to clarify, I mean, uh, Jason and Tim are on the finance committee, but I don't think they're the only people on this board that are interested and engaged with finance. They were just chosen by you to be on the finance committee.
Based on their, their.
I don't want to speak for Jennifer, but she's been on it before.
I spent five years on the finance team and manage a huge budget at work, but you know, I'm sure I don't know as much about finances.
It would be nice to have a woman on the committee as well, just two cents.
On which committee?
Finance.
Are you, are you saying, are you asking that if she's on the board?
I mean, we do have a board member who works at business school.
Are you asking that if she's on the board that you'd like me to put her on the finance committee?
Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Well, I was under the impression that you did not want to serve on that committee any longer, so. Okay.
So getting back though, um. I wanted to share that I reached out over email because I had Kelly's email and asked, and she would be willing to resign from other positions should she be chosen. And I do think somebody who has a degree in finance and was a financial consultant like Nate would have a lot to offer. A- as do our finance committee members. I just don't, I just disagree with the assertion that, that they're the only ones sitting here who are interested and engaged with finance.
My point was that of the two candidates coming in, there's someone who could hit the board quickly on the finance committee and if that wasn't clear, my apologies.
I really don't know where to go. I, I, e- even though we sort of settled on these two, I really just go back to the fact that, um. We had a lot of great candidates and. This is a really hard decision, Michael.
Hey, you know, looking back at my notes, uh, that Nate wrote in, you know, I already mentioned the selfless, uh. Kind of his story at the end, um, what he did there was that, that was really impressive, but it, you know, it's not about you. And, um, I, that, that was impressive to me because I think it, you have to have that mentality when you run for the board or you put yourself out there and. So I'm still. Well in the Nate, um. Camp.
So I guess, again, one thing I would think of is, and you know, I'm not saying you have to have spent years volunteering for the district or anything, but. We are saying a certain thing to the community if somebody who is new and to give us great feedback apparent. One of our questions was, what have you done for the district and what, how have you volunteered and served already? And I wonder if having a history of service. Does, I mean, I just think that's, that shows a real commitment and Nate just hasn't been here long enough to serve and I'm sure he seems like he's great and he'll find other ways to serve. And I'm not saying that this position should be a reward for service, but on the other hand, stepping up time and time again and, you know, a few different capacities has some. I don't know. I'm done talking. I've been talking a lot. Either one would be fine.
One other thing that is. Stuck out with me from Nate and I, as I reflect back when our district was kind of going through that. Kind of tumultuous time with the, um, football, uh. Team and all that stuff going on. Nate was, Nate would sit back. At every one of the meetings when all the students would come and talk and then one time he got up and spoke, um. And I think he kind of alluded to it here when he said he just kind of, when he saw the, all the kids standing up and speaking and he decided to come up and speak. And he spoke with a different. Kind of. In a different way. He was very calming and he, he. Cause some of the parents were pretty aggressive when they were speaking to us. He was not that way. He actually can't, could, first came up and shook all of our hands. Very engaging when he spoke. That, that, that has always stuck out to me as one of the many people that stood up and spoke. He stood, he stood out to me from that because of that.
I was just going to, uh, piggyback on something that Lauren said. You know, kind of like, uh, I, I don't, I don't like the question of like, you know, what have you done? What have you done instantly? It, 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 when I was given that question, I kind of rolled back and, cause you know, what, what have I done? You know, uh, you know, what have I done besides, you know, sacrifice to move here so my kids could be in the district and. Work as hard as I possibly can and as a result of working as hard as I can. I didn't have as much time to volunteer and, you know, so does that make me? Less worthy of, of trying to have one of those positions and. I don't know if this is what Lauren was saying, but even something I took from it was. Do we want to say to all the new families moving in that if these kind of opportunities come up? You better have four or five years of volunteerism in before you can step, step up and put yourself out there and. I, I don't want that. I mean, I was here in the district for only five or six years when I interviewed to be on the board. And it was a tough decision to decide to run. It's, it's always a tough decision to decide to run and made a lot of personal sacrifices to do that. But I pointed out again that several of us went through that process, didn't get appointed, ran and got on. So, um. I, 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 I look at it from, you know, fresh eyes are a good thing. Celsius was. Really energetic. I, I did, I did like that. He was very energetic. He will be a great part of the community. I, 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 I don't, I don't want. I don't want a volunteerism or what committees you've served on to be a witness test to someone's dedication of what they would do on the board. So I'm, I'm not looking. Individually at that. I'm looking at, at a complete package. And when I look at it from a complete package standpoint. Nate is who stands. And Nate stands out to everybody in the field to me as far as a complete package goes.
Well, and I, and I don't, it's not like I sat here and tallied like what committees people volunteered for, um. But again, and I would agree, looking at holistically, it does tell me. Sort of how they collaborate with others. sort of how they collaborate with others and that they're successful in that enough that they have done it in several different committees or appointments or volunteer work. It shows sort of the depth of their capacity and commitment. And so, you know, like I said, it's not like I tallied things up, but to see that someone is consistently showing up. And like Ryan had, you know, stepped up to be on the PTO before this came up. Like people do volunteer even though they're working full time. And, you know, and I was working full time, but had a weird schedule, so I was able to do PTO the entire time. So it's not a, it is a holistic view of someone. And when I look at what the work that Kelly has done and consistently and, you know, has done it previously in, in other districts. So I, I just want to make sure that it's not, you understand that it's not an additive process. It is looking at what she's contributed holistically to the community. And, and again, this is an appointment. It's, you know, you're not going to get this job forever, you're going to have to run in a couple of years. And I don't think that we're sending a message to the community that you have to be a volunteer to get appointed should an opening come up.
Lauren and I have something to say. We were just trying to be, who wants to speak first? So I hear, I hear what both of you are saying. I, I've had family in this town for a century. I didn't go to high school here, though. And I remember when we moved in and I was meeting people and getting involved, PTA, foundation and all this stuff. It, it was a pause. It's like, well, what have you, what are you involved in? What are you, I'm like, I don't know anybody, I just moved to town. You know, I, I remember what the store used to be when I was a kid growing up and would visit Graham and grandpa, but I don't, like I haven't done anything yet, that's kind of why I'm talking to you. And it, it was just a little, a little hard to, to kind of chip away at like, what do I want to do? And what are these groups? And so I, I do want to pause a little bit about having somebody who's a little newer to the community. That's, that's a big sticky one, I think, for me. And he, he is involved in things, okay, not, it's definitely not what Kelly's involved with or others or us or whatever, absolutely not. But he did have a letter from a former superintendent about the work that he had done in the partnership in the old school district, which I'm not surprised hearing what he did with Rachel, I did not know that. Hearing that he sent Nick, who was the other candidate that we had down, that means something to me that's respectful, that's empathetic, because that's a hard thing to go through. And that means he's continuing to learn about the process of hiring a superintendent, which was something a lot of people in the community talk a lot about when they're mad at the superintendent or they love the superintendent, but they don't really get involved when we're hiring them. Because I know how many people are in our school district and I know how many responses we got when we asked for different things. So to know that he did that when that came out tonight, that, that, that made me pause. I was like, okay, that's, that's pretty, pretty classy. Okay, the dog story, you know, he likes to tell stories, clearly. Need to watch the length of board meetings and deliberations tonight, apparently. But at the end of the day, that story actually was impactful for me. I wrote, he got inventive and he knows what's important. Because it wasn't like, okay, the logistics, sometimes we get so mired in, and rightly so, in the procedures, like I've had a lot of conversations around Julie Kelly and why we didn't interview her last week. And I'll have that conversation. I, I made a vote and I'm happy to talk about why I felt like that's what I wanted to vote at that time. And it, it was a lot of details and it was a lot of good conversations that the policy committee can have around what to do if this happens again with appointment. But his story was like a reminder to me, it's important we get mired in the details, but it's also important that we focus on what's going to get us over the finish line to serve what's the most important thing. And in that story, it wasn't the logistics of the size of the crate moving from one place to another because of the size of the cargo hold or whatever it is. It was, you can take this dog on the plane, I don't see, like, let's just figure this out and make it work in a safe way. And I was like, okay, because I didn't know where he was going with that story. I have to totally be honest with you. But I was like, mm, okay. And we talk about stuff like that at work in leadership. Like how do you protect what's important? And how do you, how do you serve them in creative ways that gets the job done? And maybe it's not the most conventional thing, but it, you're listening because you heard what the problem was, you thought through it and then you provided a solution. So I actually thought it worked and I didn't know where he was going to go with that, but that's all I wanted to say.
Lauren, you're going to say something and then I think we need to try to cast a vote.
I kind of forgot what I was going to say. It's okay. You know, we have a great letter from the CAC, a group of parents. I would say in terms of being inventive, you would find few people who are as inventive as the parent of two children with autism, is my guess. But I just have great admiration and, I mean, I don't know Kelly really personally, but you know, that I'm guessing she's had situations where she's had to be pretty inventive too. It just occurred to me that what I was going to say is, is that I was not saying that you have to be a volunteer in the district in order to get picked or run or whatever. But it is very hard to choose between so many intelligent, we, we're blessed in this community with lots of engaged, intelligent, talented community members. And so, one of the questions we asked was, how have you volunteered in the district? So I was only referencing it because it was a question that we felt was important enough to ask.
Michael, may I ask a question? So it seems like we're fairly well split. Is the process, is it straight up just a vote? Is it someone makes a motion? Is it, what, what is the process?
My understanding is that we will take a vote and if it is split again, we'll see what happens. And then once we've decided on a candidate, then we'll take a vote, then we'll make a motion to appoint that person.
And Michael, if it's still split, then it goes to Naomi?
No, what I was pointing out earlier is that some districts are very harsh and only allow two votes if they're both deadlocked twice. I don't think necessarily that we need to go that way. I'm, I'm prepared to, to throw, possibly throw my vote over to Nate, just in order to move this on. If we take this up to Naomi, Norman, I don't know what her process is, I don't know how many times she's had to do this. But Kelly Van Single is a known entity to her and Nate Hanson is not. But I'm just, I don't know how that's going to work in her office. So if you have any more, if you, if there are no more questions, let's put this, put this to another vote right now and see what happens. I know, I know, big, I heard deep breaths. I'm going to start at the other end this time. Tim Austin.
Nate.
Thank you. Darcy Burwick.
Kelly Van Single.
Me, I'm not really sure anymore. I'll just say with Kelly Van Single at this point, Jennifer.
Nate.
Lauren.
Kelly.
Jason.
Nate.
Okay. Considering that Kelly Van Single is prepared to run again and she's quite looking forward to it and I know she's a known entity in the community, I'm, at this point, I could change my vote at this point to Nate Hanson and that would break the tie and get, make us decide that this is Nate Hanson was going to be our next board member. I hope.
So you've cast your vote, you're saying?
I'm, I'm changing my vote. If we have another vote right now, I will, I will vote for Nate Hanson as opposed to Kelly Van Single, which would mean four to two. So.
So as to not have another vote, I can just put forward a motion then that the board appoint Nate Hanson to fill the vacancy left by Brad Gerby.
Okay, because I was going to make a motion for Kelly, but we said that we were going to take a vote.
Oh, do you want to do the vote again?
I guess, because like, I guess that's why I clarified what the process was, because I was going to make a motion.
The only reason I made the motion is so that we didn't have to be another vote because Michael can't change his vote, we would have to do another vote. So we can do another vote, that's fine with me.
Okay, because I thought that was the second vote.
That was the second vote. If you'd like a third vote, we can do that right now.
I'm happy for it to go to the, I think we're fairly well split and would like a third party, but.
Sorry, Darcy, I'm just clarifying, you, you'd have it go to the ISD.
I mean, you know, Jason had talked about it at the last one, that we didn't have to, to make the appointment, that it could go up.
So what, what I heard is that Michael would be willing to, I don't want to speak for him, but I, I heard to not have it go to the ISD. So I think procedurally, someone for one of the candidates has to call for a motion and then we know where we're at.
If you'd prefer to have a vote again, a third vote, that's fine with me. Or I can just simply say I have changed my vote from one person to another. Are there any other board members who have changed their votes from one person to another? So at this point then, there are four votes for Nate, two votes for Kelly Van Single.
So Jason's motion then?
So that's the rest of my sentence.
I'll second that.
So could you, would you please state the motion again, please, Jason?
I will make a motion to have the board.
In fact, don't we have a statement up here? Oh, we don't. The recommended motion is to.
The recommended motion is to.
Appoint.
Appoint Nate Hanson to fill the vacancy left by Brad Gerby.
Should we put a date in?
Effective.
Until December 31st, 2026.
Oh, yeah, to fulfill the, yes, I'm sorry. I thought you meant when to start.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, I don't know what has, the 30 days has to do with that motion right now, is there any?
Sorry, I was just saying, I think it probably is a good idea to have it effective. I think it would be effective immediately.
Just to, I think what you're saying is to make sure that we are within the 30 days, yeah.
It is. And that would expire, my point is the expiration on December 31st, 2026. I wonder if we need a voice vote on this, but all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much. So I will reach out to Nate, I will reach out to the other candidates, unless you all want to do that. If you want to send them messages yourself in the next day or two, that would be great. But give me until tomorrow morning to resolve that. The next board meeting will be August 12th, 2025 at 6:30. Without objection, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Public comment.
Oh, we have a public comment? How did I miss that? All right. Libby, would you be comfortable standing, sitting at this table?
Is it still on? Oh, it is still on? It is, I think it is still on, yeah. I think I was waiting for Darcy. Am I good? Can I go? Okay. I was debating whether or not to even make a comment because it's a comment about a sensitive topic. And it doesn't matter anymore because you guys have already voted. But I, there wasn't a particular candidate at all that I didn't like. But I was, there was one particular comment that it rubbed me the wrong way. And it was, I'm a parent who's admittedly nonreligious currently. I'm a parent, sorry, I'm a parent who's admittedly nonreligious currently. And I was concerned when one particular candidate wavered on their decision to pursue the position until what sounded to me like a revelation in church. How a person comes to a decision is of course their own journey to make. However, the perception of religion or decisions being made with religion as a deciding factor concerns me. It's not meant to disparage anyone's religion or the importance of religion in one's personal life. But I believe in particular areas with diverse and public populations and the various backgrounds and beliefs that are in the school, that it should have remained a personal one. I realize he's telling a story and he's sitting here in front of you guys. It just, it, it concerned me. And I know I'm not the only person who would think that, but I'd wanted to bring it up. Because I feel like if I didn't, I'd be doing myself and other people who might have seen that way disservice. It just, it's just because it rubbed me the wrong way. But that's all I want to say, it was just, it's just my personal opinion and comment and it's not meant to disparage anyone or even him, I, he's nice.
Thank you, Libby. So without objection, I'd like to, well, maybe just so we'll, we'll actually have a motion. Motion to adjourn made by.
Yes, please. Motion to have.
Support activities.
All in favor, please.
Aye.
Thank you very much.